Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. I'll now call the meeting to order. I don't have a gavel, it's here somewhere. If you could please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
Ready, begin.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we could get the roll call, please. Chair Wyler?
Here.
Commissioner Macaro? Commissioner Spear?
Here.
Commissioner Jester?
Here.
Commissioner Stevie?
Here.
Commissioner Correll? Commissioner Augustinson? Moving on to the minutes of July 22nd, 2025. Do we have any changes, questions, or a motion to approve? Motion to approve. A motion to approve by Commissioner Jester. We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Macaro. We can get the vote?
Motion to approve the July 22nd, 2025 meeting minutes. Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Macaro? Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
Commissioner Jester?
Approve.
Commissioner Stevie?
Approve.
Commissioner Augustinson?
I'm staying, I wasn't here.
The vote is five to zero to one to approve the July 22nd, 2025 meeting minutes.
Thank you. Moving on to written communications. Are there any written communications on any items not on the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Any oral communications?
Yes.
Well, on items not on the agenda.
No, there are no oral communications.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing. Tonight, we're going to hear PL 23-0129 and the rest of those, which would be for the Escon, uh, Escondido subdivision and religious facility, if we can. Hold on, if, do we have any disclosures before we move to staff presentation?
Yes, Chair Wyler, I have a disclosure. I live within 1.6 miles of the subject property. I don't foresee it as a conflict and do not see a reason to recuse myself on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Stevie. We'll go ahead and go with staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wyler, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ivan Flores, Principal Planner with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting on item two of the Planning Commission's agenda tonight. On March 15th, 2023, Diru Tantud, representing Escon of Escondido, submitted a tentative subdivision map to subdivide an existing 24.53 acre site into 11 parcels with 10 residential lots and one non-residential lot. A development agreement to develop residential parcels in an area of the city identified as being within the North Broadway deficiency area, which includes pavement of 12,500 feet per lot and is only applicable to the residential lots. A conditional use permit and design review permit for construction and operation of a 11,700 square foot Krishna temple. The project also includes a density bonus request to allow for an increase in density and the use of incentives or concessions or waivers as permitted by state density bonus law in Article 67 of the Escondido zoning code, and a grading exemption for slopes up to 32 feet in height. The project is located in the northeastern area of the city and is surrounded by residential uses to the south and west, agricultural uses to the east, and a commercial nursery to the north. The project site is also located within the hillside and overlay district as identified in the city's general plan document. There's an existing legally separate parcel within the middle of the site and is not associated with this application. The residential development is located at the northwest corner of the project site. There's an elevation difference of approximately 200 feet from the southern project boundary to the northwest corner adjacent to Rincon Avenue. The development area is located approximately 400 feet away from the residential uses to the west and 700 feet away from the island parcel to the south. The project is located within the Estate Two General Plan land use designation and is zoned residential states 20. The underlying zoning district requires 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. However, due to the state density bonus law, the applicant will waive that requirement. Residential uses are permitted on-site while religious uses are permitted via conditional use permit pursuant to Article 6 of the Escondido zoning code with specifics, with specific site requirements outlined in Section 33-1106 of the zoning code. Additionally, both sites are located in the Housing Element Suitable Sites inventory. The smaller residential parcel was forecasted to provide six above moderate units, while the larger parcel was forecasted to provide 32 above moderate units. On the smaller residential parcel, they exceed this requirement, whereas a non-residential parcel will result in the loss of capacity identified in the Suitable Sites inventory. However, the project still complies with the provisions of no net loss with project As detailed in the staff report, the proposal before the Planning Commission is a reduced version of a previously approved project. On May 23rd, 2000, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 99-50, which was subsequently appealed by a group of residents to the City Council. The City Council held a public hearing on June 28th, 2000, and upheld the Planning Commission's decision to approve the project with additional conditions of approval. Between 2000 and 2003, subsequent entitlements, uh, subsequent entitlement permits were submitted for a vested tentative map and development agreement for four-lot residential subdivision to the west and a vegetation removal permit for removal of coastal sage scrub. All entitlements subsequently expired. As shown here, the project, previous project included various landscape features, including a courtyard, water features, various gardens throughout the site, and a mechanical equipment yard. Additionally, the dormitory building was located adjacent to the western parcel as shown at the bottom left of the project site. Here we show comparative analysis between the two proposals, which include a reduction in the size of the temple, a reduction in off-street parking, and reductions in the height. The tallest point of the structure was 74 feet, while the current proposal's 51 feet in height. Additionally, the project does not include a K through 12 education use, however, it does include ancillary educational components. The project is conditioned to prohibit the establishment of a daycare or educational use unless a modification to the conditional use permit is requested. On this slide, we have a rendering of the previous proposal and proposed temple. The previous proposal was approximately 74 feet at its tallest point, which represents the feature adjacent to the hillside area displayed in the background. The proposed Krishna temple is shown at the bottom. The only buildings shown in the rendering below are the monks' residence and the Krishna temple adjacent to the hillside. The temple is comprised of three buildings: a 6,221 square foot temple hall, a 4,733 square foot monks' residence with room for four monks on-site, and an 813 square foot bathroom building. The project is required to provide 55 off-street parking spaces and will provide 72 spaces resulting in an excess of 17 off-street parking spaces. The project is sited approximately 90 feet away from Rincon Avenue and complies with all required setbacks. The primary access to the site is located on Rincon Avenue, however, the existing driveway will be maintained and is not proposed for removal. As stated earlier, the project includes a grading exemption for cut slopes and fill slopes in exceedance of 20 feet in height. The grading exemption is for the cut slope immediately to the east of the temple, while the fill slope is adjacent to the proposed residences to the north. The Escondido zoning code does not have a specific landscaping requirement for church uses other than complying with the required amount of street trees and landscaping in the off-street parking area. The applicant will plant approximately 42 trees on-site and will landscape the manufactured slopes as required by the Escondido zoning code. Additionally, condition of approval 11E of Exhibit F in the resolution requires that the applicant maintain the landscaping along Rincon Avenue to serve as a visual buffer. Modifications to this area will require Planning Division review and approval and may be subject to further review by the approving body. As discussed throughout the staff report, the applicant will host a range of daily services starting at 4:30 a.m. and ending at 8:30 p.m. daily. Additionally, there are ancillary activities and services proposed ranging from scripture classes, yoga, and music lessons for classic Indian instruments. The Sunday school is not permitted to operate independent of the religious facility and anticipated attendance is approximately 20 to 30 students. A majority of the events in the supplemental details of requests in the staff report would occur on Saturdays and Sundays. The services during the weekend will accompany a communal dinner to be held within the dining hall. There are conditions of approval limiting the use of the dining hall as it is intended to be restricted to visitors, guests, and congregants. The conditional use permit also includes weddings and associated receptions. Generally, weddings are held on Saturday and Sunday between 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. The average attendance is approximately 50 to 100 people. The applicant has noted that festivals would occur throughout the year with three festivals identified as the largest: Janmashtami, Diwali, and Ramanaavami. All the events would begin at 6 p.m. and be over at 9 p.m., with the exception of the Janmashtami, which will end at midnight. These festivals will require temporary use permit as required by Article 63 of the Escondido zoning code. As part of the temporary use permit request, city divisions and departments will review the request and will condition the project once details are known. These conditions can trigger a need for additional permits, building permit, fire permits, building permits, and parking management plans to deal with the influx of attendees. As stated earlier, the project includes a grading exemption for the residential site also, specifically adjacent to Lot 6, Lot 6, which will have a height of approximately 23 feet in height. Additionally, the project includes a density bonus request for the residential site. The underlying general plan land use designation would permit a total of nine units based on the slopes, the site slope categories. However, the applicant proposes to restrict two of the lots for low-income households as detailed in attachment two of the Planning Commission's staff report. Due to this, they're permitted a 47% increase in density but are only requesting one additional bonus unit for a total of 10. The applicant has not utilized their incentives or concessions which they're awarded to based on the affordability restrictions that they're providing. However, they will use waivers on lot design related to the required lot size, required setbacks in hillside areas, and lot width averages. The design and architecture of the homes is not proposed at this time, and further review will be required pursuant to Article 64 Design Review of the Escondido Zoning Code. Our water efficiency and landscape regulations codified in Article 62 of the Escondido Zoning Code generally require street trees and a tree per lot for residential sites. The conceptual landscape plan shows a total of approximately 50 trees and complies with the requirements in Article 62. Upon submission of a design review permit, city staff will review the proposed landscaping for conformance with the conceptual landscape plans. Article 6 regulates height, Article 6 of the Escondido Zoning Code regulates heights of buildings and residential zones. The maximum height permitted in the residential state zone is 35 feet. The highest point denoted here is the red line and is approximately 51 feet and is permitted by Section 33-1075 of the Escondido Zoning Code. Specifically, towers, churches, and steeples may be erected above the height limit provided that no portion of the structure be used for sleeping nor should provide additional habitable space or be deemed as an excessive or unreasonable use of space. The project concentrates the central tower away from the single-family residences to the west and is approximately 400 feet away from them. Additionally, the building is substantially set back from Rincon Avenue by approximately 90 feet and will be further screened through landscaping along Rincon's frontage and the planting of the site's future slopes. Based on this information, the tower is not an unreasonable use of space as detailed in this Planning Commission staff report and is consistent with similarly permitted structures for religious uses throughout the city. The applicant proposes a blend of natural tones consistent with the surrounding topography, such as brown sandstone, red stone, and white pink beige for the tower feature. The applicant has indicated that this architectural design is consistent with typical Krishna temple architecture, which consists of tones for color, various spire features, and ornate detailing across the building's facade. In mid-April, city staff was contacted by the President of the Rocky Point Homeowners Association. City staff met with the concerned parties on May 7 to provide background information regarding the previous proposal and to listen to their concerns. City staff conveyed the concerns to the applicant and specifically mentioned the request for a balloon test. The intent of a balloon test is to show interested parties the height of a proposed structure. A balloon test was hoisted in the area and allowed for residents to see the proposed height of the temp, the structure. This is not a requirement of the Escondido zoning code, however, the applicant agreed to this request. On June 26th, 2025, city staff met on-site with the applicant, the Rocky Point Homeowners Association, and the island parcel property owner. The intent of this meeting was to provide additional context to city staff to hear concerns from the surrounding neighborhood. City staff provided additional information regarding potential conditions of approval and the regulatory requirements of the Escondido zoning code. Additionally, the project was noticed in accordance with state law and the Escondido zoning code, which requires a 500-foot radius around the property. As discussed in the previous slide, one of the main concerns from the adjacent neighborhood is compatibility with neighborhood character. This cross-section is intended to show the distance from the temple site and the great difference moving west to east. The temple site would be approximately 400 feet away from the residences and would have intervening landscaping between the temple and the existing residence. There's approximately a five-to-eight-foot grade difference between the proposed residences and the existing residences to the west, and there's an approximately 40-foot grade difference between the proposed temple and the residences. Additionally, the applicant did conduct the balloon test as discussed in the staff report. The yellow arrow denotes the, uh, the perspective of the camera in that direction of the commercial You can barely see it in the background, but the red call-out is to identify the balloon The recommendation before the Planning Commission tonight is to recommend approval of the project to the City Council with specific conditions of approval. Staff drafted the conditions of approval based on the proposed operations of the religious use, and in doing so, reviewed previous conditions of approvals for other churches and the previous iteration of the project. These proposed conditions of approval will limit the ancillary use to ensure that they do not operate separate from the primary religious use and to ensure they ensure, ensure compliance with the Escondido zoning code and ensure no modifications without city approval are made to the site features which provide visual relief and noise attenuation for surrounding As discussed in the staff, the staff report and in the draft initial study mitigative negative declaration, the project is located in a high-fire zone. A fire protection plan was submitted and reviewed as a part of the environmental review and the development process. The fire protection plan was reviewed and approved by the city of Escondido's Fire Department. The applicant is responsible for maintaining compliance with the report for the temple site and the residential portion. Additionally, the project will incorporate five hydrants throughout the project site as required for the temple. Being that the project is located in a high-fire zone, the project does not require secondary access. Furthermore, the project will increase emergency access to the project site through the straightening of Rincon Avenue, as detailed in the fire protection report. An initial study was prepared for the project and identified impacts of the shown resource areas, which include biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazard and hazardous materials, noise, and tribal cultural resources. A notice of intent to adopt a mitigative negative declaration was distributed to residents within a 500-foot radius of the project site, was published in The Times Advocate, and was posted within the County of San Diego's Clerk's Office. The document was circulated for public review from April 11th, 2025 to May 23rd, 2025. During the public review period, the city received two comments from the same party: one from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and four unique comments from residents who received the notice of intent. None of the comments received during the public review period warranted recirculation of the environment, environmental document as they didn't identify new significant impacts. A response to comments document was included in the final initial study mitigative negative declaration for the commission's consideration and recommendation. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program was also included to monitor implementation of those mitigation measures, and those mitigation measures have been included into conditions of approval for the project. Yesterday evening, the applicant requested a modification to the, to address the restriction of no outdoor operational activities. Specifically, they request language shown on this slide be included to ensure they're able to conduct, conduct outdoor processions of approximately 100 feet leading to the temple entrance without amplified sound. City staff have not analyzed this request due to its late nature. The planning, the Planning Commission has the purview to modify or add conditions of approval to the project. In the event that the Planning Commission wants to support the applicant's request, staff recommend and recommend that the commission consider distance, noise, duration, and general location of the processions as it relates to this request. Based on the analysis in this staff report and as presented during the public hearing, city staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-08 recommending that the City Council approve the project subject to the condition of approval. That will conclude staff's presentation, and the applicant is also here for a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was an excellent presentation, so it's much appreciated. At this time, what we're going to do is we will have the applicant, I believe that they have a presentation that they would like to make, and then, right after them, then making their presentation. Sounded like the HOA would like to make a presentation, and then, at that point, I think, then we'll go on with the individual speakers, and when we get to that point, I'll have further instructions. But at this point, if we could have the applicant make their presentations, and you have 15 minutes.
First off, we'd like to thank the city staff for their help and good advice, and we'd also like to thank the planning commissioners. I know you're busy in so many things, so thank you for taking the time to hear our presentation. We, the statement that all audiences like to hear, we'll try to be brief, so, because we appreciate it. Let me start off with a little history, why this project means so much to us. We have a temple which we'll keep in Pacific Beach. It was built in the '30s as a Navy barracks. It was a film, theater, it was a factory, it was an Elks Lodge. It's nice inside, but it's basically a square box. There's two other Hindu or Vedic temples in San Diego County, and they're tucked into strip malls. It has long been our desire of our congregation. We've, as you've seen once, we came with a larger project, now we're coming with a much smaller. But to design, to present a traditional Hindu-Vedic temple, there's a long tradition of sacred architecture, just like there is the medieval cathedrals of Europe in Christian tradition. There's all kinds of details of sacred space, how you invoke that sense of the divine, as you find it in the Buddhist tradition, Christian tradition, so many other traditions. It's also in our Vedic tradition, Hindu tradition from India. So, we've saved for years, I'm an old man, now who knows how long I'm going to be around, but we want to build a traditional temple. There's proportions, there's ratios, there's elements. There are churches in Escondido. I've got about 10 of them, and I'm sure if I looked farther, there'd be more, that have steeples that are, they're in residential areas, they have steeples, they're, you know, far over the height limit. It's an essential element. I could get into all the details, but I won't, because I don't want to take up your time. So, just, this has been the dream of our congregation. We've come back to you with a scaled-down version, but we are attached, I don't know what the right word to use is, but we like to build for, they say that a culture is only one generation deep. We would like for our congregation, for our kids, to build a traditional temple where they can do their worship as they've done for centuries, and that's our gift to future generations. So, I think I'm over my three minutes. Oh, I forgot about, thank you, Kevin. Just to give you an example, how many people here support the temple and live in Escondido? How many of you live in Es, could you stand up? Do you mind the IJIS? These are the people we're talking, trying to serve. Huh? Yeah. So, thank you very much. And you can sit down. Anything else I'm supposed to say?
No.
All right, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. Kevin Sullivan, I'm a 55-year resident of the city of Escondido, glad to be back in front of the commission for this project. We have a PowerPoint presentation. I think Ivan is going to click the slides. We also have our project team here available to answer any questions. Okay, so, you can see on this slide, here's an overview of the project. We've got the project temple site pushed mostly to the north toward Rincon Avenue and away from the residential uses to the south, and over on the left-hand side, you see the 10-lot subdivision with lots noticeably larger than the existing residential subdivision to the west. So, we're, we're trying to bring a bigger, more estate-sized lot to the residential subdivision. Next, please. So, you saw a comparison earlier of what was approved by both the Planning Commission and the City Council back in 2000. You had a significantly larger main temple, we're now reducing that by almost 80%. We've got significantly less lot coverage, less parking spaces, and some of these architectural elements, you know, we've got 55% reduction, 40% reduction, 31% reduction from what both the Planning Commission and the City Council approved 25 years ago. Next, please. Here's some elevations, and you can see in the, the middle of both of these, the top and the bottom portions of the slide, you see a green line there. The green line is the 35-foot height limit for the zone. And so, there are only just a couple of little architectural religious elements that are above the 35-foot height limit for the zone. You've got just a couple feet, just a couple feet wide, kind of toward the middle, and then over on the left, you've got the shikar, which is only about 15 feet wide at the base, and it narrows to just a few feet wide up at the top. So, you've only got very nominal, non-habitable architectural religious elements above the 35-foot height limit. Next, please. And here's just another view showing the same thing. Again, the green line shows the height limit that we could use, and, you know, 90-plus percent, probably more, 95% of the project is well below the height limit for the zone. Next, please. Next, please. Here's an aerial view that shows the temple project down at the bottom, that it'd actually be the north, and you can see Rincon Avenue. And then, we did some distances. So, to the landlocked parcel to our north, it's almost 800 feet away to the residence, and it's 137 feet higher. To the southeast, there's another residence about 781 feet away to the edge of the residence from the temple, and that's about 157 feet higher than our project. Over to the right, that'd be the west, it's 486 feet away to the nearest residential subdivision structure, and it's about 40 feet lower than the pad for the temple. And then, to the south, you've got 243 feet and 258 feet away to the commercial growing operation structures. Next, please. As noted by the staff report, the project meets or exceeds all of the city codes and standards for both the temple and the 10-lot subdivision development elements. The city zoning code section allows unoccupied, unhabitable church steeples and towers to exceed the height limit for the zone. Next, please. There was detailed environmental review performed for the project, and the determination was that there were no significant environmental impacts. The project had a super-detailed review of potential impacts. It included hundreds and hundreds of pages of technical studies. The project MND was reviewed and approved by many city departments, including city fire and engineering. The project MND was also reviewed by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And with pretty standard, minimal mitigation measures, the project is not going to have any significant environmental impacts. Next, please. The project is also going to improve fire protection capabilities and emergency service responses in the area, and it does it in a number of ways. First, it installs a larger water line for increased water supply. It installs five new fire hydrants. It requires ignition-resistant features for all structures. All new structures have to be sprinkled. We've got accesses increased to the property and adjacent areas for emergency vehicles, and there are fuel modification zones that are required to be maintained to enhance fire protection and protection. There's also been a claim that we're on, you know, we've got some kind of dead-end situation in an emergency response. That's just not true. The project is located less than a mile away from North Broadway on Rincon, about a half a mile to the west of the project. Rincon goes to two lanes each way. There's tremendous access out on North Broadway, on North Ash, and continuing Rincon to where it becomes Country Club and goes to Center City, and then also I-15. There is significant evacuation capabilities for very nominal and minimal traffic that we're going to have for the project. Next, please. The project also has less-than-significant noise impacts to distant neighbors. I'm sure you know and you've heard, as planning commissioners on various projects, that noise dissipates over distance. And as we pointed out, you know, we've got significant distance from adjacent residences. We've also got ambient noise from Rincon Avenue of 53 decibels on some parts of the temple project. And so, the project operations are not going to cause any significant noise impacts. We've got, you know, residences that are 786, 781, 486 feet away from the temple project. In addition, the temple project must comply with all city noise ordinances. Next, please. Here's just a street view from, I guess, just inside, I guess that is Rincon or in the Rincon Avenue area, looking back toward the project area with the, you know, mature vegetation that's required from the very robust landscape plan imposed as a condition of approval. Next slide, please. So, ISCON of Escondido requests that the Planning Commission, consistent with staff's detailed recommendation, approve and certify the MND for the project, approve the Temple Project CUP and Design Review Permit, and approve the subdivision project and related entitlements, including the development agreement. And then, we would also ask, as pointed out, for the clarifying language to Condition of Approval E9 regarding unamplified wedding processions being able to go into the temple where the actual wedding will occur. That's part of the historic and religious tradition and standards for the project and for the temple. So, that is our presentation, and we have the team here available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. I think what we're going to do is we will let the HOA come up, make their presentation, and then we'll reserve our questions, I think, right after that, before we bring up the rest of the public for their public comment. Yes, Commissioner Jester?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sullivan, what is your, what is your official role with the...
I'm outside counsel for the ISCON of Escondido and the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if we could go ahead and bring up the representative from the HOA?
My name is Alan Williams, and good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here representing many residents of North Escondido, county residents who border this property, and I serve as the HOA president of Rocky Point Ranch. We're here to share serious concerns regarding the Hare Krishna development project. Next slide. Before diving in, I want to ensure you're familiar with the layout of the area. What you see here includes a nursery, existing residential properties, and the proposed Hare Krishna development. This is a 24-acre site, and while the plans do not explicitly state all intended uses based on ISCON's practices and history, we have strong reason to believe the property will be used in ways not fully disclosed. In fact, we don't think there'll be a residential 10 homes built on the property. Next slide. This area is a box canyon. There's only one way in and one way out, and that's on Rincon Avenue. I know we just heard otherwise, but that's not the case. The traffic impact from the proposed temple and grounds, which I'll detail later, raises serious concerns for emergency access, especially during wildfires and natural disasters. You can see by this, there are plenty of dead ends in this community. In fact, there's no other alternative ways to go until you hit the intersection of Rincon Avenue and Conway Drive. Next slide. Here's a comparison, the Emmanuel Faith Community Church in Escondido. In fact, this church was started by Escondido residents. They had a very small property, and they expanded, and then appropriately, they built out and moved properties. As you can see in the Google Earth image, their campus includes multiple access roads, many different entrances and exits, which facilitate traffic flow and emergency response. In contrast, the proposed Hare Krishna site lacks that kind of infrastructure. They just don't have the roads available. If approved as is, this would be like any other facility, religious facility in Escondido, and not in a good way. So, the manner of this presentation, we've just heard that this is just like other churches that will be built. It's not the case, because other churches in Escondido are not in box canyons like this proposed project. Next slide. This issue, fire and emergency access, is our top concern, and the current plan barely begins to address it. I'm going to go ahead and read this. "The site is located within a designated high-fire hazard zone. While the mitigative negative declaration states the project will comply with required fire protection measures, it offers little substantive discussion of wildfire risk or emergency access during large events. Given the location, the scale of festival attendance, further detail is absolutely warranted. It's not currently in the plan. It doesn't exist." Next slide. "We don't say this lightly, but there is considerable evidence suggesting a lack of fire safety awareness on the property. For example, a festival was held using a homemade brick oven that was lighted during the festival, and there are multiple stacks of wood pallets on the site. There seems to be no regard for any kind of fire precaution whatsoever. Every spring, the neighbor has to call the city, and thank goodness, the city responds to this one about weed abatement. They never cut down their weeds by their own movement, they need the city to tell them to do it." So, we've got a pattern here of not keeping care of their existing property. Next slide. "Twenty years ago, ISCON signed an agreement with the previous property owner to construct an easement road. To this day, no road has been built, and there's no promise right now that it in fact will be built, because they're going to start with the temple with no easement road. That's a problem." Slide eight. "This agreement is registered with the county, yet current city staff has categorized it as a private matter. That leaves our community confused, because this easement road is essential for emergency access and will protect both lives and property. This will be some of the remedies that I'll mention later, but this matter needs to be solved between the private owner within that property with that easement road. ISCON..." Again, this is over 20 years ago, and they still have not built this easement road. It's bad faith. Slide nine. "Let's talk more about traffic." It's okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you, Ivan. "Let's talk more about traffic congestion and noise." This is directly from the plan. There was soft tones about this, but I'm going to need to amplify this just a little bit. "The temple plans call for seven daily services, each drawing up to 30 attendees. That's 14 traffic spikes per day, cars coming in and out. The first service begins at..." Wait for it. "4:30 a.m. is the first service. That's when the cars start coming in and waking up the neighborhood, and they don't end until well after 8:15." Next slide. "But weekdays are just the beginning. On weekends, attendance could reach 50 to 250 people." This is from their plans. "And yes, our backyards have effectively become a wedding venue. The plans are vague. There's no clear information on whether these events are held indoors or outdoors, but we know the reality, it's happening outside. This is how these events currently happen at the site." Slide 11. "And there are the festivals, at least three major festivals per year, likely more. In fact, their plan says there's more. Where will people park? No one has a clear answer. These are outdoor events, not contained by buildings or parking stalls." Next slide. "There's also evidence that ISCON intends to increase the size..." Well, let me just say this about this image. This is a video. This is one of their festivals that occurred. There's a recording of this, if you cared to see it, but I've just shown you the slide, you can get the picture. This gives you a sense of the scale and scope, but I did want to take you to the next slide. This is not in Escondido. This is in Spanish Fork, Utah. This is a Hare Krishna temple, and you can just see up there what their leader is boasting about, that it started at 100, went to 3,000, they're excited about going to 10,000 and projecting it to go to 20,000. We all know this, when entities have a footprint in an area, things tend to expand, and we just have this deep level of concern that the city won't have the responsiveness, because we're overtaxed as it is, to respond to festivals and events like this. We have a deep level of concern. Next slide. "This document, now removed from their official plans, is telling. It referenced overflow parking, a clear sign that ISCON anticipated larger events." This wasn't the plan from 20 years ago, this is the plan from this time period. "And anticipated larger events than what's now disclosed." So, just to break this down, there's a whole overflow parking area. ISCON very much knows that these festivals are going to draw large volumes of people. They put it in the initial plans, but it's problematic, because they've got all these other requirements they need to hit. So, they removed these plans, but there's still no remedy on where all these people are going to park. Next slide. "This is the intersection that I referenced before, at Rincon Avenue and Conway Drive. It's already a choke point. This will make it much worse. You've got a new development there. In plans that I read too, ISCON said that the traffic will increase..." Their study said traffic's going to increase by 70%. That's a lot. Next slide. You know, the gentleman before me brought this up. I just need to stress, we live in California. This matters to our government and matters to many of us. In the long and short of it, is this bumblebee needs to be protected, and the study is not complete. It's still not determined, it's not complete, it's not done, it needs to be thorough. Next slide. "This is ISCON, Escondido's own website, highlighting their animal sanctuary. Yet, it's unclear whether any proper permitting has been obtained for this use. So, you know, are we planning an animal farm? Because I didn't see that in the plans, yet they're advertising it as much. And it's just another sign that, here we've got this organization, they said, 'We're just going to have a temple, and we're going to have residences.' We don't believe they're going to build residences. And then, we already have mentioned that they're going to have animals on the property. I don't think they're even permitted to do that right now.'" And then, the next slide, please. "This further talks about the cow protection project. I guess our question is, how many cows will be protected on this property? There's a few they bring in here and there, but what's going to happen is, where's this in the plan? Because clearly, they're doing it right now, they haven't mentioned this at all." Next slide. "We've got some remedies. This doesn't have to be adversarial, so let me read some of these to you. Strictly prohibit outdoor events within daily activities. Solve the easement issue and require the easement road in residences to be constructed first. It would be a good way for them to show good faith that they're going to do this too." They haven't done it. It's been over 20 years. "Significantly reduce daily public services to one with a cap of two." This is very commonplace in many churches, is they have a couple of services a day, usually just one, and then the big events are on the weekends. "The next one is eliminate festival events from the proposal. Restrict parking on Rincon Avenue from intersection of Conway Drive to east towards city-county line. The city needs to erect traffic lights at the intersection of Rincon Avenue and Conway Drive for safety. Eliminate the onsite housing and food distribution aspects of the plan to mitigate potential increase in transient populations." We've already got good neighbors who, they developed interfaith, they're serving and working with the homeless there. It does bring a lot of folks to that part of town. Unfortunately, whenever we drive Center City, we have to see some of that human wreckage that's along the road. It's very sad. And the people in the north side of town, we do not want this expanded. We don't want food programs and shelter to be brought up to our community. We've already got homelessness there. You may be aware of this, we had probably about 50 people in an encampment butted up against Escondido High School that sat there for a year. No one was able to do anything, because it was owned by private property, and it was very hard to remove those folks. They finally did, which was good. "The next point is restrict the further development of the animal sanctuary and require ISCON to formally apply for permits immediately. Direct the plans to mirror a truly neighborhood church, not a religious pilgrimage destination, because that's what it sounds like to us. Compel ISCON to build the eight-foot wall between Rocky Point Ranch and their property. In their plans, they said it was already there, it doesn't exist. We'd like that. Engage with San Diego County in the plan. There's close to 40 residences that live in the county. Is the county even aware of this project? The adjoining government entity to the property. And properly fund code enforcement to respond to violations. That's currently not taking place in the city. I called on code enforcement to take care of a gentleman, seemed like a great guy on Iris, he had a restaurant out of his garage. The city responded back, the code enforcement said, 'We don't work on weekends.'" we don't work on weekends. Sorry. Now, I think this gentleman now has a permit to do this, but that's what my experience has been as this, as a resident of Escondido. Who's going to enforce this stuff when it's, when it's, when the violations occur? Next slide. The frustration is growing, and so is the petition. These are just a few of the names. These are all Escondido residents that live near the Hare Krishna temple. There's more. We're, we're, I mean, hopefully there's going to be a pushback on this plan for them to get back to work and do this right so that we can also have some neighbors that we think are going to, uh, follow the plan that they put out. Um, residents from District One and Two, um, we're not going to stand passively by as this large-scale, high-impact project is pushed through our community. We urge you to send this plan back and require significant revisions before any further approval is considered. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I think at this point, um, what I would like to do before we get much further is open this up for Planning Commissioner questions of not only staff, uh, but the applicant and, uh, if necessary, um, Mr. Williams as a representative of the, uh, homeowners association. So at this point, do we have questions? Sorry, my alarm went off. Um, Commissioner Spear.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, everyone, to those presentations. They were thorough. I do have a small question, just a clarification on traffic. Um, I was looking at, it says in the report on page thirty-two that religious facilities generate twelve to seventeen trips, and that a local mobility analysis waiver applies in this case. My question is related to what's included in the trip count. I know it's referring to the proposed religious facility. When it gets to the residential development portion, is that included in the trip count in the future?
Yes, the local mobility analysis, uh, the traffic scoping agreement includes the entire project envelope. So it's the ten residential units along with the temple site.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I do have a question regarding the, um, additional requests. I don't know if now is a good time to ask this question, but my question relates to, eh, eh, we have this, um, wedding processions additional request, um, and we have some options in considering that. Maybe this is premature, but, um, I was curious what the options are because you, you had alluded to some in terms of if the, if the planning commission wanted to take that up, we could, but we would, uh, you recommended that we include certain factors for consideration. So my question relates to, certainly that's an option, that the planning commission could look at that request and, and weigh in right now. Um, the other options, I'm guessing, might include deferring that, and how would, if we deferred it for the staff to consider, because you haven't had time to consider it yet, how would that weigh into a decision that the planning commission would make tonight if that was deferred?
I'll defer that to our city planner, Veronica Ronas.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Spear, for that question. So as far as options for the commission at hand, so yes, the commission has the purview to address the request as they see fit, and as Deff noted, we have not had time to analyze that request. The commission could table the item back to staff, for staff to work on with the applicant, a recommendation out of that additional information. That would mean there would be no action on the project this evening. Um, tabling would be to a date uncertain and be dependent upon additional information and that analysis being conducted through staff and the applicant, um, providing that to us. The commission could also condition, uh, continue the project to a date certain. So similarly to the tabling, uh, it provides more time. However, it's pointed to a specific planning commission date for return and for decision. So in both of those options, no decision rendered on the project would occur by the commission. The commission could obviously choose to, um, act on the project as recommended by staff as well, or, uh, move through deliberations for another action, such as denial.
So none of those options include separating that decision and making a decision on the portion, I, I guess we can't make a decision on that tonight unless, uh, uh, we, we can't separate the two, is what you're saying. We'd have to, any approval tonight would have to include either ignoring the issue altogether, um, or deferring our decision tonight in its entirety. Is that correct?
So I'll let the city attorney jump in if she sees fit, but I believe the issue at hand would be that if the commission feels they have adequate information provided from the applicant who's present this evening, um, based on the information provided from staff regarding the rest of the project, the commission could decide to make a decision on the requested modification from the applicant. It is just that staff have not had time to confer with the applicant and get information from them in order to make any sort of, uh, analysis as it relates to the municipal code and provide that recommendation. So at this point, staff doesn't have a, a recommendation on that action. The commission could decide based on the evidence provided this evening whether they want to act on that or table or continue. As far as bifurcating the request, I don't believe that. I'll, I'll defer to Dare.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I don't see a way to do that because what we have is, um, a, a project that has conditions attached to it, and the request is to modify one of those conditions. So I don't really see a way you can, uh, separate the modification request from the conditions of the project.
If then the commission decided to move forward and ignore that request, what, um, and let's say there was an approval granted for, for, for instance, um, the property owner then in terms of options is, would have to completely submit a new request, or?
There, there is a, um, an avenue for applying for a modification to a conditional use permit. I might let our city planner jump in on, on how that would work, but that would be at some point a possibility.
Yes. So if the commission chose to act on the project as recommended by staff and essentially disregarding the request from the applicant, then the applicant could choose to, uh, modify the request prior to, or subsequent to the approval from city council. They could work with staff after the decision from planning commission and defer, um, their city council date. We could return to the planning commission, I believe, with the additional information, um, with that modification request, but ultimately, um, the recommendation from your city planner would probably be if, if you want that additional information analyzed by staff, would be to table the project so we can analyze it accordingly.
That, that has impact in everything we do going forward tonight. I would recommend that in light of that and the consequences of that, that maybe we pose that question to the applicant in terms of their request to see what their thoughts are on that.
Hold on one second. But, you know, eh, I, I think that this is an important part of our deliberations, um, once we have, I think, answered a lot of the other questions to give us more clarity on where we think we ultimately want to go by the time we get to the deliberations before making a motion. So I, I, I think I would like to hold off on having the question answered at this point so that we can consider everything as a whole and not get just stuck on, on the one item. Because we've got a lot of people here. I think everybody wants to kind of, uh, voice their opinion on this. I, I want to make sure that everybody gets heard since we're all here so that we narrow this down at the end on maybe, um, none, one, or multiple, uh, aspects of the project. So I'd kind of like to wait until we get a little bit further into, you know, asking our questions, getting clarity on the project as a whole before we get just stuck on this one item.
Even if that means that we are tabling our decisions to a future date?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and reason being is, we've got everybody here. I would hate to have every, we go, yep, just table it all, stop the whole procession, um, until we get this one item resolved. I, I, I really don't want to do that. I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard. If we come back again, um, you know, eh, then people may or may not be satisfied with where we went, and they have that opportunity to speak again. But I, I, I think I don't want to get really stuck on just this one issue. If we have a, agreement, we can push on or if we want to discuss this further?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Continue with your questions. And, and even if it relates to this, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just don't want to get us hung up on this, this particular item at this time.
Maybe what, maybe what we can do is defer the answering of that question until we've cycled through everything else and put it to the end. Let's do that. Okay. Thank you for that. I... I suppose, um, there, there are myriad of, of, um, there are myriad of points that were brought up by, um, the HOA representative. Um, I listed nine. I don't know that I care to go through each of those, but perhaps I would ask generally, um, to staff, um, since you have gone through these, do you have any general responses to those questions or those items that were brought up?
So there were a, a list of items, as, as you noted. Um, generally, uh, city's response, city staff's response is going to be multiple departments and divisions, one of those being fire, our engineering divisions specifically as, specifically as it relates to the easement issue. Um, regarding the CDFW comment and the Quatch's bumblebee, uh, as, I can speak pointedly to that component also, uh, as a part of this conversation. Um, the city did receive a comment from CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, when the document was posted out for public review. Uh, the, uh, items that they identified was the need for a protocol survey. The applicant did do a protocol survey, which is appendix J, of the final initial study mitigated negative declaration. That was included in the resolution packet, and that was also included on the city's website. The results indicated that those result, that the protocol survey came back negative, and in conferring with CDFW, they indicated that no further coordination is required by the city or the applicant, and that the project can move forward as it's been conditioned. Regarding the other issues, specifically the easement issues, um, city staff and conferring with the city attorney's office and with the engineering man, uh, engineering division was that, um, as Mr., uh, Alan said, is that, that is a private matter and that the city's not in a role to adjudicate these matters. Um, what were the other concerns?
One was regarding the, um, dead ends.
The dead ends. And so, uh, as, uh, so that portion of Rincon Avenue, as you had, what, east, so if you were to continue traveling to the temple site, um, does lead up to residential areas. That area of Rincon Avenue has been identified on the city's general plan to eventually be extended. Um, and so right now, it currently does lead to private residences. However, when development happens in that area, Rincon Avenue will be extended, as identified in the city's general plan circulation element.
Specifically, um, issues related to fire risk that were brought up. Um, I know, I guess one of those was the access, uh, emergency access points. I guess we're talking about dead ends. Were there other issues related to that, the, the fire issues?
No. So as noted, the project is located in a, um, high-fire hazard zone. Um, that was revealed as a part of the development review process, the fire protection report. Because of where it's at and as it's designated, it doesn't require, uh, a, a secondary access. But I can let, if she's a favorable board, Deputy Fire Marshal kind of speak to the contents of the fire protection report and any requirements of the Escondido Fire Department.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, thank you for your question. I'm Levana Kretke, Deputy Fire Marshal with the Escondido Fire Department. Um, so as Ivan mentioned, this project is in a high-fire severity zone, not in a very high-fire severity zone. So there's three levels as designated by the state fire marshal in the map that we just adopted. Um, the, the very high per, um, the government code Title fourteen, any projects within the very high for residential do trigger secondary access because of that designation. High does not trigger that under the current requirement. There is some, um, length requirement in our standards. It's eight hundred foot for residential, which would be measured from Rincon to the end of the cul-de-sac for the residential. I don't have that right in front of me, but I do know that they're not exceeding or meeting that eight hundred foot, so they wouldn't be required secondary access for the residential per our standards either.
Okay. Thank you.
And before, um, do you have any more questions?
I don't.
Okay. Um, any other questions, um, for the fire marshal before we move on, since Levon's right up here already?
I can come back if you think of them.
No other questions? Commissioner McCarr?
I just want to make sure that we're addressing the public's concern with fires, especially in these days. Um, and that was one of their major concerns. So you're saying that based on your evaluation of the project and what's been presented and permitted or presented for permit is, is acceptable for our standards?
Correct. It, it's meeting not only the state and national requirements currently, but also our standards require, uh, currently.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, now we'll just move on to general questions. Any other questions of staff, the applicant, or the HOA? I have, I, go ahead, Commissioner Stevie.
This is a question for the applicant. Thank you.
No problem.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening.
You currently have a temple in Pacific Beach, correct? Is that what you said?
Yes.
At your current temple, do you serve meals for free?
We don't have any... We charge a modest amount. I think it's two dollars, three dollars for our regular programs for food for the homeless. We have joined with, uh, Father Joe's. Other downtown, we cook and we take to them. But at our PB site, Pacific Beach, we don't do anything like that, nor is it intended at our current site.
So your current forecast for homeless population coming to your site in order to obtain a meal is zero?
Is zero. We don't allow smoking. We don't allow alcohol. We're vegetarian. Uh, you know, it's a long walk from North Broadway to our site. Eh, you don't have the factors that are going to make it a mecca for, um, you know, homeless.
If, if I could also add, Commissioner, there's a specific condition of approval. It's E seven in the, the red, the, the resolution for the temple project, and it says that the ki- the kitchen facilities can only be used for guests and visitors for scheduled religious services and teachings. So this is not, you know, an open kitchen.
So it would be a violation of your conditional use permit if it was used to feed the homeless?
Yes.
Okay. My second, thank you. My second question, uh, is regarding the animal sanctuary. What is it? What animals will you have on property? How will they be kept?
So there, there isn't an animal sanctuary. I don't know what kind of loose terminology. So there, there isn't an animal sanctuary. I don't know what kind of loose terminology is used there. There are animals on the site. We do have a 24 acre property. I think that there are up to or around six cows, I think sometimes that we have, and maybe a horse. But all of the animals are allowed in the underlying zone, and the number and the type of animals has to comply with the city code. That will always be the case.
I could, is it all right?
Can I interrupt? On your website, it says it's an animal sanctuary.
So whatever terminology you want to use, we are never-
Oh wait, you just said it wasn't an animal sanctuary. Quote.
So I said whatever loose terminology is used on the website, this is not intended to be an animal sanctuary. We have animals that are allowed.
It says on the website, it is an animal, animal sanctuary.
So whatever animals will be on the site are allowed under the underlying zone, and the type, and the number of animals must comply with the city code.
It seems, look, I'm sorry to interrupt, but right off the bat, when we're trying to define things, what's going on, you have on the website, it is an animal sanctuary, and then you're coming before us and saying it depends on what the meaning of the word is, is. So I don't see how we, how we're going to all here try to solve a problem, that everybody, I can see that's both sides of the argument, but we can't start from the beginning of if you have something on your website that says it's an animal sanctuary, you can't spin your way out of that. And I'm not saying that it, maybe it's appropriate, but let's deal with what the truth is and what is being said on the website. Otherwise, we can't all operate in good faith.
I appreciate your point. I accept that it's valid. I didn't, in all honesty, I had no idea who wrote that and put sanctuary and how old it is. We are fine with accepting a cap on how many cows, on no other animals than cows. We're fine with accepting. We do have no intention of making it an animal sanctuary. And I'm sorry that that statement is there. We can put it as a condition. We are against factory farming. We have milk used in our tradition. So what to do? We have some cows on site. And, but again, if you want to accept a cap on that, we're fine with that. We're, you know, we have one horse. The farm manager likes horses. But, but again, I am fine with strict wording that puts whatever you accept as a reasonable cap. We're not trying to pull a fast one on you. I promise.
Okay, so you, you are not running any sort of formal operation that might be invoked with the idea of an animal sanctuary? You don't have a petting zoo?
No, no, we don't have a secret plan. We're not going to not develop the 10 homes and, you know, expand. And that's not our intent.
Okay.
And we're fine with you including restriction. Kevin won't agree if he's trying to protect this, and I appreciate that. But we're fine with accepting reasonable caps as conditions. We're, we're okay with it. We're okay, we're not okay, but we're willing to accept so we don't have to put everybody through this again. I was thinking about it on the way out here. Maybe, because, and I don't want to take everybody's time, but the tradition is that the wedding party meets, and it symbolizes leaving the girl's house to their new home, and therefore there's a procession. But maybe we could start it inside the community hall and just do it inside. You know, so we're, we're willing to accept the, okay, it's already accepted, not amplified. But if we have to start from a different location and do the whole thing inside, we'll figure out how to do it.
I appreciate that. I have three more questions. Yeah. The, thank you for that answer. That makes complete sense. The eight-foot wall, are you going to be building it between the residential properties and the Rocky Point?
If, if the city has conditioned that as part of the project, then we'll build it. I don't know anything about an eight-foot wall. Typically, eight-foot walls are a little bit high under, you know, agency codes, but.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Stevie, there's, there is a limitation on the height requirements within the side setback and the rear yard setback area. Six feet's your max, and typically outside of that required setback requirement, you could go up to eight feet, but typically it's six feet.
Okay, so the eight-foot wall that was brought up by the HOA has not been contemplated or discussed?
It has not, no.
Okay. Okay, that's a proposed potential condition, it sounds like. Okay. The easement, it has been alleged that, that your organization has not built a paved road as agreed to 20 years ago. I'd just like an opportunity for you to respond to that, to clarify for the commission.
Right. So currently, the house and the parcel immediately south of the temple site has paved road access. During construction, it's going to have paved road access, and after the development, it's going to have paved road access.
What, what is, is the easement in question that has not yet been paved? The 2003 easement?
Yes, because that needs to be realigned. We need to work with the other owner. We are perfectly willing to work within the terms of the 2000 and 2003 written agreements with the previous owner, Mr. Reardon. And if Mr. Stevenson, the owner of the parcel, is reasonable, then this can be quickly resolved. But this is also not a zoning issue.
Okay. And then, my final question, and you don't have to answer, but it is a question out of curiosity. In the event that this project is not approved, I assume that your organization has been approached to sell your property. Is that a safe assumption?
And I don't want to take up your time. When we, as there is a sacred architecture, there's a, I'm just trying to keep it quick. There are scholars who know these principles. When I approached them, we're going to build a temple, you know, what are the ratios, percentage, you know, proportions? How do you invoke sacred space? They said, well, it comes from the land. I said, well, that makes sense. Are there any requirements for the land? Well, high in the south, slopes down to the north, hills to the east, open to the west, single road in front, five types of fruit trees growing spontaneously, water flowing across it. I said, oh geez. You can imagine when I would call realtors, here's our location, here's our price range. Oh, we have a few more things. So it's a whole story how we found this land. We will, we do not want to sell it. We've been offered so much more than we paid for. This land is unique. I have a email from the scholars. It's a city, holy city called Tirupati. The land is perfect for a temple. Get at all costs. So the idea is that we're going to sell it and use it for something else.
Oh, no, sorry. I did not mean to imply that. Where I'm going with this specific question is, the probability that that land, in the event that you despair and decide to sell it, remains undeveloped, is approaching zero. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair.
Okay. And the probability that that land, if sold, goes to a housing developer who puts high-density projects on that 24 acre property, is approaching 100. Is that fair?
That's in the ballpark, yes.
Yeah, okay. So you are coming to us tonight with a temple and 10 houses, and how many acres of undeveloped land that would remain undeveloped?
It would be approximately 19 acres undeveloped.
19 acres. Okay. I just want that on the record and wanted to make sure that we were all understanding what is occurring here. That is the end of my line of questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chester, any questions? Okay. Commissioner McCarroll, any other questions? Commissioner Spear? Okay, I've got just a couple. We'll, we'll start-
Do I stay here?
Yes, for the applicant first, and then I'll, then I go with staff.
I thought maybe I was out of the shooting line, but go ahead.
Number of anticipated weddings per year. What is your typical anticipation? And I know it's-
10, 12 a year.
So it, it's not an every weekend sort of event throughout the year?
No, and we're not going to use it as a wedding venue, or, you know, whatever you call it, a wedding hall. That's not our intention.
Okay. The procession, because that's the condition that we were going to discuss in censure up here. The procession prior to a wedding, what does that entail? Where do you intend to start before you get inside the temple? What, what is it that you're looking for?
Traditionally, the two families gather, you know, the bride and the groom. The two families gather together, and it represents the families coming together, you know, the bride going to their new home, like that. So it, I mean, it could be from here to that wall. It can be 20 feet.
So does this occur, your intent is to have this occur in, essentially in the parking lot, or up next to the temple?
I was thinking-
Is it up next to the temple?
Up to the temple, not close to the temple.
Okay. And as a part of that, coming together, is there a chanting, or a prayer, or something where multiple people are involved in that?
Usually, usually they're led by whoever's doing the wedding. We'll chant Sanskrit prayers, but it's unamplified. It's one person reciting Sansus.
Got it. Okay, I understand. That was all my questions for the applicant, and now I've got a couple of questions for staff.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was a photo shown by, by the HOA of a large gathering of people in Utah. It's, it's my understanding through, what I've read through the staff report, that any of these festivals are larger gatherings other than what's been identified. The applicant is required to present a, what, a temporary use permit?
That is correct, and that is qualified in Article 73 of the Escondido zoning code.
Okay. So as a part of that, there will be a full evaluation of that festival, number of people, how it's going to be parked, how people are coming and going, almost like what we're doing here, except that it's, it doesn't come before this body for final approval?
That is correct. And just to clarify that, yes, at the time that these, details are known, whether it's, you know, anticipated attendees, parking management plans, how they're going to park everybody on the site, additional need for permits, additional condition of approvals for the temporary use permit, they would go through the typical development review process. And just to clarify that, that is a discretionary action. The Director of Development Services does not have to approve it if there's extenuating circumstances. So it's not a, you apply for it and you get it for the temporary use permit.
So it's discretionary. Is there a notice for a hearing, like a zoning?
There is not, no. It's approved out of, by the Director of Development Services.
Okay. The other question I've got, I've got two more. One was there an assertion that traffic will increase by 70%? That came from the HOA. Is that a correct statement, how it was presented?
Thank you, Commissioner. I was trying to find some math that got me to that number, and I couldn't find it based on the traffic scoping agreement. The numbers that we were looking at, looking at the average daily traffic counts, it looks like it's about a 15% increase in that area.
Okay. Okay, then, then that's fine. And then, one last question of staff. Has there been any code compliance complaints against this piece of property in the last, let's say, five years?
I did contact Escondido Police Department several months back, but there was nothing, there was no written complaints about violations on this property.
So I'll go ahead and interject right there. Chair Wyler, thank you for that question. There are past closed code enforcement cases on this property as they relate to weed abatement. However, there are no open code compliance cases for the site.
Okay. Approximately how many?
I don't have that information readily available. I just know that there are code compliance cases that are closed.
Excuse me, excuse me. Go ahead.
We can find that information and follow up with the commission, but at this point, we don't have a number at the moment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Oh, yeah, was that only for weed, weed abatement, or was it for anything else?
As far as I can tell currently, it's weed abatement, but I would need to confirm that that is the only item by delving into records.
Okay. And, you know, maybe not for this body, depending, if we end up coming back and tabling the one item, then yeah, I think we would like to get that answer. And then one, actually, I had one more. As far as the number of animals out there, what's the, what's the limit in type? For what, what is this, an E20 zone?
Yeah, so this is located in the residential state zone, our E20, which is 20 acre minimum lot sizes. There are, depending on the type of animal, there are certain restrictions and limitations. For example, bovines, which is large cattle, et cetera, as indicated by the applicant, they're permitted one per acre. And so, for, depending on how many acres they have, they can have that many animals. And so it really depends on what the type of animal is identified in the residential, Article 6 of the Escondido zoning code. But it's typically tied to the lot size.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Yeah, I think we're going to wait on that one. You know what I would like to do at this point, because we've been sitting here for an hour and a half. I'd like to take a quick break before we bring up the speakers, and we'll continue at, let's say, 8:37 on that clock. So we'll take a quick, quick break. Okay, we're going to reconvene this meeting. If you could take your seats, please.
Excuse me, Chair, could I address one procedural issue that we've talked a lot about tonight?
Sure.
ISCON withdraws its request for the additional one sentence to be added to condition E9 of the temple conditional use permit. We'll go with the conditions as written.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open this up to our public speakers. And what I would like to have happen is, if our clerk can name, list off three people, if you could start lining up on this side, and the first person that gets called, if they could come to the podium, what I would like to do is just make sure we're moving through this as quickly as possible while giving everybody enough time to speak. Everybody has three minutes to, to give their presentation or give their comments, and at the three-minute mark, you have to end, because we have a lot of speakers here. And I want to make sure everybody has their opportunity, but we have to limit this at, at three minutes. The other thing is, is if you could, in your presentation and your talking points, do not, please do not repeat- do not, please do not repeat, you know, what previous speakers are saying. If you say that you agree with another speaker on the traffic issue, unless you have something to add that goes beyond that speaker, just say that you're in agreement with the previous speaker. I would appreciate it, because, like I said, we've got a lot of speakers, and we're going to be here quite some time. So if we can keep this moving along at a good pace, everybody will get their opportunity, and that will help us in our decision-making process. Okay? Thank you. If you could list the first three speakers.
Yes, thank you. Pooja Desai, Bhakti Tantod, Jo Curtis.
So if the first speaker could come up, the other two just hang out by the other lectern right there.
Chair Wyler, if it gets to three minutes, Chair Wyler, if it gets to three minutes, would you like the clerk to call time audibly?
Yes, please. Do we, do we have a timer that lights up down there?
We do have--
Do you have a timer there?
It's visible for the speaker and not for us.
Right. So there is a timer. I think it'll flash yellow when you're getting close to the end. It'll flash red when you need to conclude. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Pooja Desai. I'm a longtime resident of San Diego. I was born and raised here in Escondido, raising my kids here, and so I'm really excited for this project. I'm actually going to read a letter on behalf of my sister who couldn't make it today. So I'm just going to read this on her behalf. My name is Neha K. Prasad. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am a graduate of preschool at Baptist Church and went to Miller Elementary, Del Diaz Middle, and Santa Fe School High School, class of '95. It's our 30th year reunion this week, if there are any eagles in the audience today. Living in the diverse community has given me such strong foundation in both my personal and professional life. Growing up in Escondido, I didn't realize I was a minority, because I had not, because that term had not really had any bearing in my life. I was welcomed in my school by my peers, invited for sleepovers from my friends, and had dinner at my neighbors' houses when my mom made something I didn't like. Those experiences shaped my understanding of what Escondido is, a city where community and connection matter more than labels. Now, we are living in a time when it's easy for us to focus on division, but tonight, I want to speak about what unites us. For me, that unity comes from both growing up in Escondido and being a part of ISCON Temple. Both have shaped me with love, support, and strong moral foundation. Today, I am an environmental engineer. My husband is a physician, and together, we are raising two children, ages 16 and 11. We share with them the same values that were instilled in me here in Escondido and at the ISCON Temple. Those are kindness, honesty, integrity, compassion, nonviolence, service, and responsibility. These are not just Hindu values, they are universal human values, the same ones that make Escondido such a special place to raise a family. I understand that change can sometimes feel uncertain, and I know some neighbors may be concerned. But I want to assure you, our temple is not here to disrupt, but to contribute. ISCON Temple around the world are known for feeding communities, providing cultural education, hosting interfaith events, and creating spaces for peace. Our presence here will not only serve as, serve our congregation, but also strengthen the broader Escondido community. Approving this temple is not about making Escondido different. It's about affirming what has always been true about this city, that people of many backgrounds, faiths, and cultures can live side by side, work together, and enrich one another's lives. I am deeply grateful to the City Council for considering this request, and I hope that you will see our temple is not a source of division, but is a place of service, peace, and shared humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could, just state your names so that we can make a record of it.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bhakti Tantod, and I grew up here in San Diego. In fact, I also went to middle school with Neha, not with Neha, but near Neha in Escondido. So after my studies and travel, we returned to San Diego, where I've been working as a physician for over a decade. I'm here to share, not the technicalities of this project, but my own personal experiences. And I'm here to share that a strong part of my identity was formed by going to the temple with my parents, from the weekly outings to the traditional dance performances and special religious holidays, which I shared not just with myself, but my friends as well. I spent a lot of time in the temple. It was a wonderful place that not only shaped my strong moral beliefs as a young person, but also provided a sense of community. Anyone is welcome to the temple. It is an inclusive space, and that inclusivity is what resonates still with me. As an immigrant myself, I see how the San Diego Indian-American community has grown exponentially over the past two decades, and I'm now raising my own kids in this sphere. While the temple in Pacific Beach is near and dear to my heart, because it's where I grew up, we need another sacred and bigger space to accommodate this growth. This temple in Escondido would be such a welcome addition to the cultural and religious space needed by Hindus and Indian-Americans in San Diego. I have no doubt that it will contribute positively to the community and culture of North County. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We could have the next speaker, and then if you could list off the next three, please.
Jo Curtis, thank you.
Thank you.
And apologize if I mispronounce your name. Brian Moran, Jackie Curtis, and Peggy Williams.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jo Curtis. My only concern is the safety and the traffic around our neighborhood. I lived in this neighborhood around, around the area for 14, 15 years now, and the traffic's been growing and growing because of the house developments that's been building around the area. And now with this new project they're building, it's just going to bring more traffic and strangers that we don't know about. That's for our safety. That's pretty much what I'd say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please. And if you can state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Brian Moran. I'm a longtime Escondido resident. I'm a building contractor. And looking at your plans, I see why he would like to do it. It's a wonderful thing for your whole community, but I don't think this is the right spot for it. And you point out that it has the hill with a northward sloping away. Well, every hill in the planet has a north sloping away. So I think it could be found someplace else where it would be close to freeways, the San Diego, San Marcos, like the Mormon Tabernacle Temple on Highway 5. It's a beautiful structure. They have it, and it's in the community. And it's where the cosmopolitan nature of this diverse community is best expressed, is in a urban environment where there's adequate services and transportation to and from. I don't even know if there's a bus line to this place. And so that's some of my problems. But also, the idea that they're going to build a 11,700 square foot facility, and it's only going to have 50 to 100 people in it. Well, if you look around, there's 100 of your devotees here, God bless them, you know, but the idea that they're, when they open up that, that when it opens, every Hindu in San Diego is going to come, aren't they? Yeah, they're going to come.
If you could just address--
They're going to come, and they're going to celebrate rightfully this wonderful thing they've built, but this isn't the place for it, and there's no room for it. They have 74 parking places. And I lived in PB in 1970s, and I knew the temple, and I saw people coming and going. And there was groups of six and 10 out front, two or three groups at a time. They're coming and going. There was 40, 50 people all day long. And so I think that they want something that they should be able to have, but this is not the location. So that's my admission.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Curtis, and I live right across the street from where they want to develop it. I have an eight-month-old, a three-year-old, and twin 11-year-olds. And my concern is whether it's a Christian church, a Catholic church, whatever kind of church, I don't want a church. I don't want a building where people who don't live in the community are coming to my community. I bought the house at a dead-end street on purpose, so there wouldn't be pass-through traffic, so there wouldn't be strangers. And then they had mentioned that, oh, we wouldn't give hot food out. And I'm confused by that, because when I Googled it, part of what they do is provide hot meals for their, for the community. And center of city, I have had homeless people over by the green space. There's a huge green space, and I've had homeless people over there that I've had to call the police for. And if they're allowed to have sanctuary there or food there, then they're not going to go. And I'm concerned about finding needles. My kids play in this area, and I don't want a beautiful rural, dead-end, nice area to then be overcome with strangers and traffic and people. And they also, when I looked on their website, it said that they have congressional chanting at 4:30 in the morning is one of their services. That's a concern. They also, from my research, they walk around in the neighborhood and in the public chanting as well. Part of providing food and providing chanting is to try to bring more people to their religion. They had mentioned that they weren't going to have very many events, but if you look at the website for the San Diego community that they have already, there's Rama Fajay on October 1st, there's Gov. Darhan Puja on October 21st, excuse my pronunciation, there's Siralah Remembrance on October 25th. So there's three in a month already. So my concern is that all of that would be so much activity for my neighborhood, and I think it would be better suited in an area that can allow for different places to come in and out and not right in a residential community where there's only houses. And there's maybe 30 houses behind them. How are they going to get through all that traffic that's going in and out? So, yeah, and the homeless is also very, and then also, they have intentions, like, oh, we won't do that, but what if, you know, I don't understand how they can say that they wouldn't do it if it's part of their religion. And then it's a facility that's 24 acres, so it's huge. And when I looked online, it said the practice of serving food remains a vital and active component of their mission, continuing to attract new individuals. So ultimately, I'm also concerned about the homeless. They're, they're right on center of city. They have bikes, and they're mentally unstable, they're violent, they do drugs, all that kind of stuff. So that's how I feel.
Okay. Thank you. If we could have the next speaker come up and call out the next three.
Mark Skok, Hannah Scott, and Sanjay Kurad.
Okay. You're on.
My name is Peggy Williams. My husband and I have lived in Escondido for over 50 years. We have seen good choices and bad ones done here in our city. For the last 13 years, we have lived at Rocky Point Ranch. We feel allowing this project to move forward is a mistake for our entire area bordering Rincon Avenue and the surrounding streets. A few of our concerns include fire safety. Our area has been designated as a fire hazard zone. In fact, our personal homeowner's insurance has been canceled twice in the 13 years we have lived here, as well as our neighbors around us. This project will increase our fire liability. With the numerous services that they have each day of the week, people coming and going, the cars parking on their property, and with only one way in and one way out presents a huge problem. Traffic congestion, starting at 4:30 a.m. each day of the week, will increase the traffic on Rincon, which is only a narrow two-lane street. Where are all these cars, where are all these cars going to park? The city should require more parking spaces on the project property. Homelessness. We are experiencing some homeless people in our area now. We feel with free meals being offered and everyone is welcome philosophy that they have, what kind of individuals is this going to attract to our neighborhoods? There are many other concerns which you, the planning commission, have already been made aware of. You, the planning commission, have the authority to do what is right for our community and the people of Escondido. So do the right thing, and please vote against this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Hannah Scott. I'm also a longtime resident of Escondido. My husband and I recently moved from South Escondido to North Escondido. And one of the things in the proposals that I do not quite understand how it's going to be measured or remediated is, again, the concerns with the timing of the function. I know in a residential neighborhood, there are certain noise ordinances and requirements for noise. And so if at 4:30 in the morning every day, they are starting their services, which is, you know, the gathering and the assembly, and the idea of keeping the noise to a certain decibel, like, how is that going to be enforced or measured? Or they really haven't expressed how that noise is going to be a concern in the area. They're correct. This is a sacred, beautiful land. It's very peaceful. You hear the birds, and I would love to be able to share it with anybody that wants to be there and owns the property there, but they're not really expressing, and we're not really sure as neighbors, the, not only the impacts regarding fire and the traffic, but the noise and starting every day at 4:30, and then with some of the festivals and other things that they're talking about. Most concerning is just, you know, the noise levels. And if we are needing to continually call and report noise ordinances and kind of taxing the already overloaded city resources for having the noise person coming out to kind of measure and how that's going to be abated, it's just not really mentioned for the use, how the noise is going to be addressed.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Skok. My wife and I have lived on Briarwood Place, which is about two football fields from the development, or the proposed development. So we've been there about seven years. And I do want to say that you've got a beautiful project, and I think that it would add to the diversity of the area. But I do have a number of concerns that caused me to speak against having it, this temple project placed in this area. Number one is the new residential. Like the others, I've got some real concerns about fire, and it's more that the bottlenecks at the various choke points that were mentioned, Rincon and Conway, and then further down at North Broadway and Rincon. The number of people that live in that area now, if a, if a strong Santana brought a fire down from the north, there would be a huge evacuation very fast, and whether we would all be able to get out would be in question. So even 10 more residents, you know, up there would be a concern for me. Also, I've got a concern about the noise. I just simply cannot believe that they will not be amplifying events outdoors. Even backyard fiestas are amplified. And so if you're going to hear, this is not a neighborhood church. This is a destination temple. And there are going to be a lot of people coming for a lot of different events, because it's simply going to be a magnet. Food, again, as the others said, I'm, you know, concerned about some of the cultural activities that may bring in, you know, folks that are, you know, looking for just, you know, free food. What I really want to say, though, and I think this is my biggest concern, is that the organization has not shown attunement with the neighborhood. If you look at the pictures on the proposal on the website, you can see the tall weeds and grass that are growing on the property, as well as the broken-down fence that surrounds it. So they have not been taking care of the property, which does not bode well for, you know, the plans that they have moving forward. And at the same time, this is, again, a huge, huge project that would be, you know, tucked into a dead-end neighborhood. And they have not done any-- And they have not done any neighborhood outreach. We've, again, been there for seven years, almost next door. Nobody's knocked on our door to introduce themselves and tell us about the project. It's like they're... I almost get the feeling that it's trying to be slipped through in terms of, you know, neighborhood awareness.
You're at three minutes. If you could wrap it up. Okay, thank you.
And if we could get the next three.
Hi, my name is Sanjay Kurwari. I'm an orthodontist. My wife is a dentist. We've been coming to the temple for the past thirty years. You know, part of the Hare Krishna community, Indians. As most of you know, we're fully like vegetarians, absolutely, you know, no alcohol, no drugs, you know, none of the stuff, you know. That's one of the basic preachings of, you know, Indian philosophy. This is, again, not to brag about. You know, spelling bee champions, twenty-eight percent of all the doctors in US, you know, Indians, sixty-five percent of hotel owners, Indians, CEOs, Google, Microsoft, Indians. No people in jail, the lowest divorce rate. And, you know, all the origin of yoga, meditation, you know, comes, you know, from the, you know, Indians. So everybody knows about karma and everybody wants a sacred place. So what I want to say is that this was already approved. This project was done, approved, boom, sailed. You know, we went through all of this. It never got to the construction phase because, you know, we could not get the funds, you know, to make it happen. It was already approved and we just had to construct it. It did not happen. So we lost whatever the time. We're trying to redo this. And all of you know it's, you know, eighty percent smaller, a lot smaller area compared to where it was before. So, you know, sometimes, you know, H O A showed some pictures. A lot of people, I can show a picture of the Vatican, but a hundred thousand people a day, you know. But this is not going to happen. You saw how many we are, how many they are. You know, we're like, you know, right now, less than a hundred fifty people. And when people come at four thirty, what they're saying, who's going to wake up at four thirty? It's only the preachers, the monks who wake up at four o'clock to do, you know, their chanting, you know, which are normally fifteen to twenty, you know, if they are in the temple. So that's one of the things I wanted to say that, you know, people were worried about at four thirty, you know, sounds. It's only barely, I mean, none of us, you know, will come at four thirty to do that. The fire department already said that, you know, it can be totally done. You know, if it wasn't done and say there were supposed to be houses there, you know, thirty, forty, you know, houses in a twenty-acre property, there would be, you know, more traffic, more issues, more problems. So here we are in a big space, you know, this temple, which is micro done right now from where it used to be. Somebody was talking about the houses, you know, those ten houses, is somebody's going to build it? Of course. Me, my dad, one of the, was one of the people who bought. When we had the original project, we had the land to construct. But, you know, we wanted to wait for the construction to happen. But as it did not happen, you know, we did not. But, you know, easily, ten houses are going to be constructed. If somebody was asking if it's going to happen, of course it's going to happen. People were saying about, you know, keeping it clean, you know, it's twenty-plus, you know, like acres.
Your time's up. If you could, please wrap it up.
So...
So thank you so much. I hope it'll be approved. You know, very compassionate.
Okay. All right, thank you. If we could list out the next three speakers, please.
Brian Nichols, Maxwell Johnson, and Arson Sane.
And if the other two could just come up over on this side, please. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Brian Nichols. I live just off of Ash. I've lived there eleven years now. Before that, I lived in San Marcos, just on the border. So I've been right in this area most of my life. I can honestly say that the Hare Krishna devotees, I owe my life to them. They're loving, compassionate, kind people. The gentleman previous to me, like you said, the early morning service, I've heard a lot of concern about that. It's called MungolRT. I love going to MungolRT, but I'm telling you, dragging yourself out of bed at, you know, three thirty to go to that, it's something that only the most devout monks and people... This isn't like a, you know, the whole community is waking up in the morning and, you know, like trucking their families out there, you know. You have to be pretty fired up to go to MungolRT. And, you know, typically in my experience, it's not something that, you know, everybody's doing all at once. Maybe, you know, you go once, you know, you go once a week or something like that and it rotates. It's not everybody at the same time. Also, in that neighborhood throughout my lifetime, I've seen, you know, when I first started going there, it was like a lush, completely undeveloped valley. You know, there was cows and horses. It was beautiful farmland. And I've seen it just be developed and developed and developed. So kind of like what you were saying, Commissioner Steve, if the temple weren't to be built there, you know, I can imagine it would likely be more track homes, you know. And we have a housing crisis. I support that. But personally, as I'm walking around my community, I would love to see, you know, a beautiful temple like we've seen on this proposal surrounded by nature. You know, I think it's, in a way, it's preserving the natural beauty that we have in that valley. Some of the last bit that's left there, you know, it's like in the past ten years. Yeah, just the housing projects, which, you know, really is what contributes to the traffic, you know. It's not a temple that's, you know, going to exasperate this traffic, you know. It's the massive amount of housing that's been jammed into the beautiful valley that I call home. I have forty seconds left. I think there is a few more. Yeah, I just, I think it's beautiful. And the people, oh, the last thing I wanted to say about the food distribution. A lot of people have been saying, you know, with homeless people, you know, coming to get their food handouts or whatever. So what he was most mentioning is they go into the community. If they do give food to the homeless, they go to the homeless. Trust me, they do not want a bunch of homeless people congregating at their temple. You know, nobody wants that. But they're compassionate, loving people. And if those people need food, they're going to bring it to them, you know. And I think that that's amazing, you know. They're amazing.
Thank you. You've reached your time.
We had three other speakers?
Kulin Tantod, Minu Sharma, and Cheryl Stevenson.
Yeah, if you could just come over there. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
How's it going? My name is Maxwell Johnson. Honestly, I just wanted to say that I support the Iscon build. I wasn't intending on speaking today, but I know it's a great community and kind of new to it. But they're just really welcome, loving people and it's a good cause, man. So, thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Arjan. I've been living here in San Diego, Rancho Bernardo next door, and Pave for almost forty years. I am really shocked from what I've been hearing from our neighbors, potential neighbors. I heard words like drugs, crime, needles on the floor. I don't know what planet we are living on, but there seems to be a massive disconnect in terms of what our community represents. I never thought I would hear these terms in this day and age. But here we are. This project has been in the making for twenty-five plus years. We came into San Diego in seventy-eight and we were looking forward to moving in here for this temple. This would have been a prize for Escondido. And I think it still can be a jewel. And the only thing I can put my head around is that there's so much misunderstanding in this community about the Hindu religion, the Dharma, the peace-loving. You know, you don't realize that even Steve Jacobs used to come to Krishna Temple to get his meal, to get the inspiration. I am asking, I'm requesting the commissioners to support this effort. This is a long time coming for this community. The Iscon temple, the Iscon represents a loving set of people. It is something you will all be proud of. And when this is built, I will invite all these community members to really visit the place. And I think it will transform you to the positivity that the Iscon breeds. I truly believe this venture will make Escondido proud of what it has, what it can do. I am, I'm very disheartened by some of the comments I heard from my neighbors. But I guess that's what human emotions can do.
Okay, your time is up.
Thank you. I asked...
Good evening. My name is Kulin Tantod. I'm a family physician. I work here in Escondido at Neighborhood Healthcare. As a child, my dad used to take me to the Iscon temple in LA. I remember the incense, the cool marble floor, the singing. It was wonderful. We lived in the inner city that time. We were surrounded by poverty and drugs, prostitution, homelessness. The temple was completely the opposite. It was a place of peace and inspiration, and it was a reminder of the divine. Those experiences inspired me to serve God and His children through medicine and community service. And that's why I support building the temple here in Escondido. Places of worship bring inspiration and hope and solace. They strengthen the community and reflect our country's founding ideals of tolerance and freedom of belief. I'm grateful to the people of Escondido for considering this project. This temple will be a source of peace and inspiration for generations to come. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Minu Sharma. I'm a physician. And I will say proudly that I'm serving my community, even the low income, as well as the veterans of my society. So mandir is why it is important to us because it's a vital center for Hindus, not only Hindus, I think for every human being. It is not only a place for worship, it is for our spiritual growth also. And our Hindu mandirs or any mandirs, they welcome everybody. I was very upset when people were saying we will be having more strangers coming there. We all are strangers, but we are still connected. We are breathing the same air. The sun is providing the same energy as to all of us. So this is not going to disrupt any of the traffic or anything. And you guys have heard by the fire people and by the city engineering people, everybody, they are following all the codes and they are going to maintain all the, whatever the legalities you guys are going to give it to them. And most of the all people are well-educated. We're vegetarian, no to war, no to guns, nothing to else. And we welcome this mandir and I want everybody to join our mandir, come, visit us. And yes, definitely, it will help you in your spiritual growth also. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could read out the next three.
Yes, John Bristol, William Williams, and Jason Womack.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you. My name is Cheryl Stevenson. I am the resident that lives right in the middle, right next door to this project. What you don't know is that we've been working with Iscon for the last, I don't know, fifteen years, kind of working through all these things with the easements. You're going to hear more about that in a little bit. That's important. And I would like to ask right up front if operating in good faith, that you would consider and stick with the promise to build that road for us. That's important. To clarify upfront, this isn't about religion. I respect everyone's right to worship. My current concerns are the same. You've heard them about traffic, safety, land use, and how this project will change our neighborhood. No one is calling it into question at all, their compassion or their intent. We need to separate that from these real legitimate concerns. There is only one way in and out. There are dead ends everywhere. Most of the side streets are, yeah, were nestled up against that mountain. Cars, residents, emergency, we've already heard all this. It's the same thing. I stand by that. If you add a large temple and subdivision, you're putting hundreds more cars into a bottleneck. That's already a concern for us. While at our risk, when this project was considered twenty years ago, it didn't account for what we've already endured, lived with since massive wildfires since 2003. We had the Cedar Fire, the Witch and Harris Fires in seven, Coco's Fires in fourteen. All of these fires, you're familiar with those. These fires destroyed homes, forced massive evacuations, and put lives at risk all within a short drive of where we live. This is not, this is a life safety issue, not just an inconvenience. The noise, the lighting, we've experienced it. We've seen the festivals. We've heard the noises. I have called the police a few times. You probably have not seen that, but it's not just weed abatement. It is the noises that we've had to call with our concerns. This is a quiet semi-rural area. Large gatherings, amplified sound, and nighttime lighting would drastically change the character of our neighborhood, adding water, sewer, and infrastructure, and it just doesn't fit. This project is out of scale for this corridor. Approving it here sets a precedent for more large-scale institutional development in residential zones. So as someone living right next door, I can say this project would permanently change our neighborhood and put residents at greater risk. I would ask you to carefully weigh the traffic, safety, wildfire, evacuation, environmental impacts before making your decision. No one is calling into question what they're trying to do to the community, the outreach, the things like that. But this is, these are legitimate concerns that need to be taken into consideration. So I don't want to drive through a temple parking lot to get to my home. I want to drive around that. I mean, that's something not personal, on a side note, but I want that to be contained. That's important to us, so. And if that fire comes roaring across the hill, it's not going to matter if it's a very high fire zone or a high fire zone.
Thank you. You've reached your time.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Well, good evening. My wife and I have lived in Rocky Point for about thirteen years. And we had a vision also. We want to move to a place next to the mountains, quiet and all that. Visualize our community now. It's like surrounded by a mountain. There's about fifty-two homes in there. And I admit, there's a lot of activity going on during the daytime. The kids are playing in the streets and on the sidewalks. But about seven o'clock in the evening, you can almost guarantee this, those kids are going to be inside their house. And then it comes to the issue of noise. You know, what is? And we can hear coyotes. Every once in a while, my wife, you hear those coyotes. The sound is magnified. It's unbelievable, the sound, how it is. And I feel sorry for those who live in that area, that residential area. Peggy and I, we're not going to be here that long. I hope so. But anyway, the kids, my son, the grandkids, the great-grandkids, it's going to change it forever. And most people just say, you know, it'll go on. It won't go on. It'll be like that. And I have an example. I want to just play just a little thing here. The chanting and the way the sound is, here it is. Now, I only played thirty, thirty seconds. This goes on for hours and hours. And if you look at this, and I guarantee you, if you're inside a temple, you're going to still hear this noise. And what are you going to do next? You're going to call somebody. Hey, it's past that two-point decimal. Hey, it's past that two-point decimal, but guess what? We're not working this weekend. We can't do nothing. So, you gotta think about this. You know, it's so easy, say, well, they'll work it out. It's gonna be hard to work out. Trust me. Well, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
I'm part of the Rocky Point Ranch Association, and I'd like to yield the entirety of my three minutes to Mike Stevenson.
If you could, once you get done speaking, if you can, make sure you fill in a speaker slip.
I already did.
Okay. Make sure you get the gentleman's name.
Yes.
All right, good evening. My name's Mike Stevenson. My family and I live at 1415 Rincon Avenue. As you review the tentative map, the location of our three-acre parcel resides at the top of the hill in the center of the applicant's 24 acres. And before I go on, I'd like to address the, the service request, the open service request. And it appears like someone erased some of these service requests I put on the Escondido's website, and I'm not gonna say it was subversive or not, but it's not there anymore. It's interesting. I have multiple complaints about the weed abatement, including the pallets, decomposing pallets over 15 years. There's 50 of them in one pile, and 50 of them in another pile. And then I have a complaint about manure runoff that's going into the storm drains. They have six cows right now, but none of this manure is contained. They go out there and clean it up every day, and I appreciate that. But there's no retaining wall. So, if it does rain, all this manure is just gonna run down the street, into the driveway, into the storm drains. And I realize the emotions, the opinions and emotions tonight probably won't matter in this hearing, so I'd like to offer some California Development Code as a factor in your decision-making. And I hand it out as a reference for the California Development Code. Some of you guys, most of you people should have a sheet there for the California Development Code. 66474 California Code says, the inability, let's see here, the inability for our parcel to evacuate quickly and safely does not line up with Code 66474G. It basically states that any alternate easement will be substantially equivalent to one previously acquired. So, we have acquired an easement within 20 years ago with our parcel, who is, the original owner was reared in. And like I said, and that was mentioned earlier, that the road was never built. But that code does state that if you're gonna force us to drive up a separate road, that should be substantially equivalent to the previously acquired easement. The city was given multiple copies of our old relinquished easement and newly acquired transitioned easement with a road maintenance agreement. We believe planning and engineering have an obligation to honor Code 66474G. As it is a recorded easement and not a private agreement, is what Ivan, which suggests. Now, let's look at Code 66474C. The proposed temple site is nothing but a magnet for a 24-acre venue and amusement farm that is not physically suitable in a high-fire-zone canyon with 200-year-old oak trees, agricultural trees, and hundreds of adjacent parcels on a one-way road. Do you all remember the Palisades Fire? Over 6,800 homes got smoked, which started in a high brush fuel-load area just like this canyon. A commercially-zoned area would be more suitable and a proper location for this type of venue. Hundreds of people, including cattle, horses, dogs, cars parked on a 10-foot-wide road with a one-way evacuation route is a reckless planning position. I have video of all these temple events, if you'd like to see them. I forwarded one to Mr. Gustafson today. Therefore, the city must not deny this proposal for two reasons. Number one, there are no safe evacuation routes substantially equivalent to our recorded easement according to governing Code 66474G. Number two, the site is not physically suitable for this type of venue and development without safe and redundant evacuation routes mandatory to save lives. And that was in Code 66474C. This proposal has not properly addressed these issues within government Code 66474 and may put the city at risk and liability should future death or damage occur during, due to any approval. We ask this board to stand with community residents and longtime Escondido voters and vote no on this proposal. Thank you for your time and honoring our concerns. By the way, I do want to mention, I don't know if I even mentioned this, but there's supposed to be a light on this thing at night, which goes against Title 24. And no one wants to see ego architecture at night, let alone in the daytime. And that balloon you put up was there for like one day before they took it down, so no one got to see that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could call up the next three after this gentleman?
Yes. Debbie Corn, Everett A. Scott, and Michael Silvacoole.
Yeah, if you could just line up over here, and then we can continue. Go ahead.
My name is Jason Womack. I also live in Rocky Point Ranch. Been there for five years, resident of Escondido my entire life, attended Escondido High School, which is around the corner. My family and I moved to this community because of where it's located, because it's secluded, knowing that nothing was gonna be built behind us. We live on, where we live in the cul-de-sac, there's a massive hill that'll never be built on, that's next to this property. And that's why we moved there, was for that, that we knew we wouldn't have neighbors behind us. My question is, kinda geared towards the Rincon build-out road. I'm wondering where that's gonna be built out to, because going east of our community, there's nothing, it doesn't go to anything else in town. And if it's being built north, that just leads to another bottleneck of another, of North Avenue. So, there's, it's just gonna, it doesn't lead out to, if we do have a fire, if we do have exit strategy, there, it's just bottlenecking even to more areas, because those are the only two options, the only option is for it to go north into North Avenue, which then leads back into North Broadway, going the op, the same direction that we're all gonna be moving on our two-way road that we have right now. Those are my main concerns, and I'm just wondering how that's gonna affect, you said it's gonna be built out, but I just don't know. I don't see where it's gonna be built out at. So, those are my concerns, and that's why I oppose this. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Everett Scott. I would like to yield my time to, all my concerns have been brought up, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I won't take up a lot of time either. My name is Debbie Corn. I didn't expect to speak. I've been a longtime resident. We live in Kent Ranch. I don't know why, this has nothing to do with any of the people. It's a beautiful religion, they're beautiful people. The letter was beautiful. We're very, you know, we're proud of that community. It's just in the wrong space. I drove out today, actually, and I don't know why we're talking about a project that's so massive on a road that does dead-end. And don't believe me, just drive there. It dead-ends. There's, there's nowhere to go, and this is a massive project. So, we're just asking that another location be considered with more freeway access and, you know, where there's more accessibility, because it is, not only that too, but because we are in a school hub, we have North Broadway, we have Rincon, we have Calvin Christian, we have the high school, we have so many kids. And literally, where this project is, it's going to pour into all the schools, because not only will they use Rincon, they're gonna cut over across Conway and come up Ash, and it's just, that's where all the schools are. We're in a school hub. I won't take up any more of your time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you could list out the next three?
Yes. Robert Morrell, Andre Chavez, and John Teg.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner Mike Silvacoole. I live in Rocky Point Ranch, and I want to start out and say I have no beef with any religions, be they Christian, Jewish, Muslim, Hindus, Mormons, Catholics, Baptists, or rogue Catholics, which I fancy myself, because I question the Pope. In fact, I feel that I've been very consistent on the First Amendment in the course of my lifetime and all its protections, including free exercise of religion, in a political climate, which most only want to afford that to folks that think like them. That all being said, there's a time and a place for everything, and out by our community and our PR, there's not really a place for a church or a temple. With climate change and fire in the road in and out, that's all true. You guys can come out there and check it out. Moreover, my understanding is that there is a written agreement and contract requiring my Hare Krishna brothers and sisters to build my guy Mike an easement and to build some homes there, and that's not been done yet. Additionally, and admittedly, I don't know much about the Hare Krishna, though I like what I've heard so far. But I know that they do believe in karma. And if they move forward and you pass this and they build a temple without building the easement for Mike, that's bad karma. So, my request is this, let's place all this on hold, let's figure out the ingress egress of that area with the road. I heard my guy here say they're gonna build developments out that way, but I don't know if that was an if or when, and I think that's important, especially for the fire folks to determine if it's appropriate. So, let's put that on hold, let's work through that, and let's all work together so that we can ensure we all build good karma together. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andre Chavez. I live in the Country Woods Estates on the north side of Rincon Avenue, and I agree with the concerns that my neighbors in the Rocky Point Homeowners Association have brought up. And I would like to elaborate a little bit more on the traffic issue and the character of our community and how it will be impacted. Our community character is defined by open space and natural beauty. It's defined by peace and quiet. It's defined by privacy. This development is not consistent with that character, and if it is allowed to go forward, I believe it will severely degrade or outright destroy those defining characteristics of our community. This temple is not an ordinary religious church. It is an architectural monument, and it will serve more as a tourist attraction for the city of Escondido, rather than a local community place of worship and religious facility. It will draw much more traffic than anticipated. It will not, it will not draw most of the traffic from the surrounding community. It will draw it mostly from a regional and international base. It's in their name. It's the International Society of Krishna Consciousness. It is a contradictory statement for the traffic assessment, although preliminary, to categorize this facility as regional when, in its name, it is international. That's where it's gonna draw its community from. The traffic assessment just woefully ignores this aspect. One case, it classifies it as regional, and it's applying a, a generation rate of just a regular church, and this does not accurately reflect the uniqueness of this property and the visitorship that is gonna come from the region and internationally. I think this characterization is inappropriate for that assessment for vehicle rates. This preliminary traffic assessment also was conducted in 2023 on Conway and Rincon. This is before the housing developments to the north of 34 homes.
Thank you. Use up your time.
That was not three minutes, was it?
No, your time is up.
I, can I, may I, may I finish? Just a few more points?
No, because it's not fair to everybody else. If you could list off, are we about done, or are there more? List off the next three if you could.
Will do.
Hold on one second.
Rob Ryde, Kevin Sullivan, Tom Plomo.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name's John Teg. I lived in the area for about 40 years, more than half of my life. And I walk every day, I walk during weekend, and then I drove two times a day, in at least minimum. But I don't think the, the massive building, you know, I'm not against anything. Actually, I welcome them. I welcome my neighbor, everything. And I live 40 years, I see people come and see people go. But on the other hand, the project is so massive, so big. And then some gentleman mentioned, the street is four-way and may fall in. Actually, not all Rincon is fall-in. Some ways only two lanes, and some ways will never become fall-in, because it's dead-end. Anyway, that's what my, my opinion, you know, from being a long time that area resident. So, I wish all the commissioners take everything into account and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
What are we doing?
He's yielding the rest of his time to me.
Make it quick. What do we have? A minute? You have a minute?
My point is to just scrutinize this preliminary traffic assessment. It, it mischaracterizes this place as regional. It is international. The way that the, this thing has structured, the data table, is from 2002, on assumptions of traffic characteristics from 2002. It's been 23 years since that table has been published. And to use that, not considering current modern traffic characteristics such as Amazon, Uber, and electric bikes, is, I think, inappropriate. This development seeks to add 72 parking spaces and 25 off-street parking spaces, 97 in total, for an underestimated weekday average daily traffic of 173. Where are all these excess cars gonna go? They're gonna go in front of our homes, they're gonna go in front of the open spaces. The preliminary assessment does not consider the vagrant population as present in this region. Another oversight.
Okay, your time, your time is up. Thank you. And if you could, list out the next three?
Kirat Shah, David Bridges, Nick Guston.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tom Plummer. I've been living here in Escondido for 25 years. I was actually the first family to live on this property that is being considered. There's an old farmhouse there. I lived there for two and a half years. My son grew up there, his friends came there, and I've been a member of Hare Krishna for about 45 years. And it's true, it's an international society. I've traveled all over the world. The picture that you saw of the massive congregation in Spanish Fork, Utah, I was on that stage playing guitar. So, anyway, the point is, is that this temple... So anyway, the point is, is that this temple is actually one of the best things that could happen to Escondido. And if we follow all the rules that you guys are putting down and trying, you know, we're trying to comply with all these things as best as we possibly can, cooperating in every way we can. They say this road hasn't been built. Well, the temple hasn't been built. Nothing's been built. There hasn't been a brick laid. We're trying to get things done. We are asking for everybody's cooperation. We're trying to do the best we can to make this, you know, a better place, you know, for Escondido and everybody involved. And we really, really beg, you know, humbly beg to cooperate with this noble effort and, you know, see it through, work with us. You know, we're willing to work with people. And as this gentleman expressed, that if we don't build this temple and we sell it, they're going to build houses there. You know how many houses they built up by Kent Ranch? Hundreds of houses. How much more traffic is going through there because of the housing development? This is going to be miniscule in comparison. Think about that. All the fire arguments, all these different arguments. You know, the temple at 4:30 in the morning? I go to these temples. How many people show up at 4:30 in the morning? How many people are at Mangalati this morning? Five, 10? The guys that live in the temple, you know, hardly anybody. Sunday feast, yeah, we have our Sunday thing, just like any other church. Anyway, that's what I say. Thank you so much for listening. Hare Krishna.
My name is David Bridges. And the reason I was asked to come this evening is I've been pretty much one of the main clergy at the temple in Pacific Beach. And for almost 40 years, my responsibility to the congregation is just taking care of them. I'm the person who takes care of the funerals, the weddings, rites of passage. There's quite a few people in this room. I've performed their wedding or the wedding for their children. And so I have a good pulse on the congregation. Just a few points I just wanted to make. San Diego Hindu community is actually quite small in comparison to Orange County, LA, San Francisco. A few years ago, it was a mailing list of maybe 5,000 to 6,000 families tops. Now, that congregation is divided amongst four different temples here. It's not just the Iskon Temple. So as far as who's attending our temple, small numbers. And it was shown up on the board there, we have six different services during the day. Well, it's already been brought up. 4:00 in the morning, I can tell you, there's very few people at 4:30 in the morning. And actually, maybe a bunch of people show up noon. A few people show up in the evening for a class. And then you do have the weekend, Sunday evening, and you do have the festivals, which you have to address. But on a day-to-day basis, you're not going to have traffic six times a day coming to six different services. It just doesn't happen at the temple. And as far as weddings, someone asked me last year how many weddings I've done. It's over 1,000. And I have a lot of experience here in San Diego, Orange County. Actually, I travel all over the US and all over in Mexico doing weddings. The average Indian wedding is about 400 to 500 people. This facility is not going to handle a that-size weddings. There can be small weddings. They can be done inside. Not a lot of noise. It's just not being built for that kind of a wedding. Indians like big weddings. They like a lot of noise. But this temple is not going to attract that kind of a wedding, just like our temple in Pacific Beach. We do weddings there only a few years because the numbers, we can't fit those people into the temple. And this is the same kind of arrangement. So you don't have to worry about elephants and horses and a lot of noise because this temple's not being built for that kind of a wedding. So I just wanted to bring up those few points. Thank you.
Thank you. List out the next three. Hold on, just one sec.
Yes, sir.
Nitan Park, Kuland, Kuland Tantoed, I believe that name was said earlier, already. And Minu Sharma and Sayajah Kuruvadi.
Okay. How close are we getting to the end?
We only have four more left.
Four more?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to reiterate what some have already said and give my appreciation for the good that this congregation does in the area. Thank you very much. I'd love to support your build in an area that will fit your dreams and bringing, upbringing people together. I equate this build to that of a large business, like a church, a department store, a collection of popular busy businesses. Their mission is absolutely great and meaningful, but it doesn't fit in our residential area. I'm not saying that their mission doesn't fit. Their mission fits. San Diego could use their mission. It's their logistics. Their logistics do not fit in our residential area. They need a space where their congregation fits, lots of parking, large roads that will fit their traffic needs, multiple routes in and out. A gentleman stated before that they have these promises of building and that these things will come, that the temple's not there, but the roads aren't there yet. I'm a Navy veteran, 24 years. We always made fun of the Air Force, that they'll build their runways first and then come back and say there's no money for barracks. And then they'll go and they'll get their money for barracks. And then they'll say, I have no room for roads, or no money for roads. And then they'll finally get their money for roads. I want to make sure that if they do build next door to our residential area and bring their mission and their logistics, that they build in a way that it actually fits. So roads first, easements, and then buildings. I would love, I would love a neighborhood next door to me. It's a guaranteed population. That would be very, very nice. This large congregation, these people that will be roaming through 4:30 to 9:00 PM, it's a lot to take in. I have two small kids. They attend Calvin Christian. They ride their bikes to school. It's probably like the worst road. I mean, my kids go right past the two crosses on either side of Broadway. Well, now, I think there's three there now. The seven-year-old that passed away to the DUI driver. So I'm late to church. I speed. I get distracted. I'm worried. 4:30 in the morning, all the way to 9:00 PM, somebody's running late to temple. Just all these little scenarios run through my head. I'm very, very concerned. These are great people. And I love that they're trying to make a home in our community. There's a nice vacant lot off Escondido between Fourth and Fifth Streets. It's been vacant for years. I think you can go four stories there. The rest of the buildings are four stories. You'd fit perfect. Tons of parking, great visuals, grow your congregation, help the homeless. They're all there centralized. Why my neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and list off the next three if you could.
Yes. I cannot read this, but I'm going to do my best. So my apologies and thank you. Baltier Tor, Christopher James, Vanessa Ferris, and Bima Plumenter.
And that wraps it up for the speakers?
Yes, it does.
Okay. If you could, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please fill out a speaker slip. If you've already spoke, you've already had your time. So go ahead.
Thank you for your time, everyone. My predecessors have pretty much said everything I want to say, but I'll keep it brief. For the past 60 years, I'm born and raised in California, passed 40 in San Diego. I live in Escondido, but I'm a practicing dentist in South Bay. I went to Loma Linda Dental School, a Seventh-day Adventist institution. So I'm quite familiar with both Christian church services and our Hindu temple services. And yes, we have music and singing inside our temple services, not unlike Christian churches. The HOA also presented a list of things they wanted. I think it was number four that said they didn't want us to hold any festivals at all. One of our big festivals, Janmasmi, is equal to Christmas. That's like telling a church to cancel Christmas services. That doesn't, that seems unreasonable, though they call their list reasonable. And they were worried about 4:30 AM services. Yeah, nobody attends those pretty much. It's the residential monks. I'm not, we're working people. We have to get up in the morning for work. So we're not going to get up at 4:30 in the morning. Nobody, it's just the residential monks. Sorry, no offense. But it's just, it's not a concern, really. I heard a gentleman saying he's scared of strangers, another saying no one has knocked on their doors and talked to them. Well, I invite all of you. Just come talk to us. Get to know us. We're not so different from you. We all seek the same values of love, safety, respect, peace. Another concern was about this becoming a destination place. It is not. If this was a destination place, we would be building on a much grander scale. The other gentleman was complaining about the word "international." I mean, sure, it's international because the founder was originally based from India. And we do get some experienced monks that come from India and lecture here. But that doesn't mean it's a destination place. Believe me, there are absolutely gorgeous temples in India that are destination places. But here, this is not a destination place. When this project first started over 27 years ago, my son was four years old, and now my grandson is four years old. We would just like a beautiful place to worship for our future generations. Thank you so much for hearing me out. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Christopher James. I've been in Escondido for the last eight years. I've been a property owner on Briwood Place for the last four years. Me and my wife have just started a family on Briwood Place. I'm probably about 800 feet from where this temple is proposed to be built. From my front yard, you'll see pretty much the spire of the temple there. All these sayings of 50-feet height limit, it's on the side of a mountain. So it's literally hundreds of feet in here. And you can see like everything from that point. Huge concerns for the Escondido of the homeless situation. It's gotten really bad over the last four years that I've been living there. I think, you know, offering food, free food, is going to make that worse. Seriously considering moving my family out of the area if this happens. And we're a young family trying to be part of this community. And it's just really sad to think about. So that's my main concerns, the traffic, kids riding bikes in the areas. There's lots of kids in my street. So it's a real concern to the actual community here. I understand they're a community. They're coming into our community as well. So like, please take the concerns of the community that's already there as serious concerns. And hopefully, this is an approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Ferris. And I could go through my resume of how long I've lived here and everything I've accomplished while living here, but I'm going to save you the time. My concern is traffic and the danger that the increased traffic proposes to my community. If you Google the Iskon community in Pacific Beach and look at where it's located and compare it to where the proposed site is going in, you wouldn't even think that these two monasteries have the same intentions. The facility in Pacific Beach is located on Grand Avenue, which is a four-lane major thoroughfare. It's sandwiched in between two major streets, Cass Street and Bayard Street, which both have two lighted intersections. It's surrounded by multifamily units. There's not a single-family residence near the monastery. And when we're told that everyone's invited to come and share in the peace and the joy and enjoy the meditative gardens, that's truly what's happening. Everyone's being invited to come and enjoy the meditative gardens. And if you look at the Yelp reviews for the Iskon in Pacific Beach, it reads like a tourist attraction or like a restaurant. Come enjoy the meditative gardens and get a cheap vegetarian dish. Best vegetarian food I've had. It's a tourist destination. It's going to attract a lot of people. The proposed site cannot handle that traffic congestion. The major intersection leading up to Rincon is Rincon and Country Club in North Broadway. I thoroughly believe that if any of you travel to the proposed site and witness where it's located, you will agree that it's not a good location. And if anyone looks up the number of fatalities at the intersection of North Broadway and Country Club slash Rincon, you'll see the amount of fatalities that have occurred there. My neighbor Nick pointed out, there's currently three memorials set up right there. And if you go another mile down on North Avenue, there's another one. So I don't believe that the location can handle the amount of traffic that's going to come in, or the amount of people that are going to be invited to come in and meditate and eat. Thank you very much for your time.
Did we miss anybody, any of the speakers?
There were some that I believe may have left early, but yeah. This gentleman here? Okay, your last one.
Is this the last one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bima Plummer. I've been living in Escondido for, I think, 15 years now or longer. A long time. We live right next to Calvin Christian High School. Like my dad said, I actually grew up on that land. So I was, you know, running around as a kid there. So it's kind of close to my heart. And I'd like to see something beautiful develop there. A lot of people brought up the morning programs and like Brian said, and a lot of people said, nobody comes that early. Few people are there. It's kind of a quiet, peaceful thing. It's not like a roaring thing that's going to be happening at 4:30 in the morning. I can tell you that much. And as far as programs throughout the day, a lot of people are concerned with that too, from 4:30 to 8:00 or whatever it is. And this is like the temple schedule. The monks have this schedule. It's in our Vedic culture to run these kind of offerings and stuff throughout the day. But it's not necessarily an influx of traffic from 4:30 in the morning to 8:00 PM. I just want to make that very clear, that that's not what would happen. The fire concerns keep being brought up. I just think it's funny because, I mean, the fire marshal is clearly more educated than any of us here. And she was here and seemed to think that it wasn't of too much concern or any concern. I didn't hear her say anything negative about the project. And I would think she would if she thought there was anything negative about fire concerns. Traffic's been brought up many times. Clearly, we don't want more traffic. It's a problem. It's going to be an exciting thing. There's going to be a new temple. Of course, there'll be some traffic. People are going to want to come from out of town to see it. I can't imagine that this is going to be happening for a very long time. You're going to go to Disneyland? You don't go to Disneyland once a month. It's not going to be a Disneyland. That was the last kind of thing that I wanted to say. It's not designed to be an amusement park. It's not intended for that. And I know everybody believes that it is mostly. I think almost everybody brought up some kind of way of saying that it's going to be this huge attraction and this huge amusement park. And many words were used. I genuinely don't believe that that's what the intention of the project is. So I wanted to state that. I truly don't believe that that's the goal of the project. The goal of the project is have a nice, peaceful land sanctuary, if you will, for meditating and just having a beautiful thing in Escondido. And I would love to see it happen. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, so we've heard public testimony from everybody who wish to speak. I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening and expressing how you feel about this project. It's always good when the public comes out and voices their opinion. It does mean a lot to us as planning commissioners, as well as city council. When the residents come out and voice their opinion, it does help us in making our decisions. So I want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. At this point, we are approaching 10 o'clock. Our bylaws say we need to end our meetings at 10-ish unless we vote to extend it further past that. Is that?
I believe they say no new items can be introduced after 10 o'clock.
Is that what it says?
Yeah, it does not say we need to, sorry. It doesn't say we need to.
That's all right. I just want to make sure we're following our bond laws.
I also just want to point out, in addition to the speaker slips, there were some comments that were just noted. Would you like the clerk to read out just a number of opposed versus support of the project?
Yes, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
In addition to the speakers that we received, we also received five slips in opposition and 39 slips in favor of the project.
And these were in addition to the actual speakers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think what we should do then is, you know, another hour and a half has gone by. Let's take a quick five-minute break. And then what we'll do is we'll finish is we'll finish up with our questions of staff, the applicant, and also the representative from the HOA, if there are any further questions. And then we'll close the public testimony, and then we can go into deliberations. Okay? So, we're going to reconvene at 10:05 for that clock. Okay, so at this point, what I would like us to do as a planning commission is, we've heard the presentation from staff, we've heard the presentation from the applicant, as well as a representative from the HOA, and, ooh, close to 30, 35 people. So, at this point, I would like the commission to ask any questions that they have remaining of staff and the applicant. So, if we can just, you know what, we'll start on this end with Commissioner Augustus in, if he's got any questions. From there, we'll close public testimony, and we can go into deliberations.
I just have one question for staff. I know, I believe the number for the proposed parking is around 70 parking spots?
Yes, 72 spaces.
And what happens for, what's the overflow plan, if, for the special events, weddings and such, if they have two, if they go over the 70 parking spots? What's the plan for that?
So, the zoning code requires 55 spaces based off of their gross-floor assembly area. The applicant is providing access to that. The gross-floor assembly area is based off of the temple site, the resident, so they park for each building. The access parking should, is intended to address those overflow events. However, as it pertains to the code requirements, the applicant exceeds those.
Commissioner Spear.
One clarification I have. There were a number of questions, of questions or concerns regarding easement and the road. Is it correct, is my understanding correct, that that access road will be built as a condition to this, and that it will extend through the residential portion and not by the temple?
I'll defer to our engineering manager for that question. Thank you.
So, the easement, so right now, the island parcel has an access road, a paved access road, down to Rincon Avenue. The project is not constructing anything in that existing easement. And then to answer your question, the project and the documents that we have and that have been provided show a road through the subdivision property, and then a road to be built up to the island parcel. And those are all in the documents that were submitted for approval.
So, no easement is lost in this process? The easement is respected?
Right. The existing easements are respected and honored, and the property is actually proposing to provide an additional easement that doesn't exist today, that gets the island parcel owner access through the subdivision and up to their island parcel. So, when the project's finished, that island parcel will have two ways to get in and out of the property.
So, they will have two, and is there an additional sort of concession to do even more than that in terms of paving or anything, anything additionally?
The project is proposing a paved road. That's not something that the, that is required.
Okay.
So, does that answer your question?
I think so. My real question is, are they honoring everything that they are required to honor, and are they doing more? And I think you've answered that question. In terms of at least suggesting that they're required to have one easement and they're providing two?
Right. And I need to be a little careful here, because there are private agreements between the island parcel previous owner and the Iscon temple. And so, the city's role is not to, is to not weigh in on those agreements that are private. You know, our role, and as we reviewed the project, is to just, one of our roles is to ensure that those existing easements are available to the island parcel owner, and they're not interrupted, or, you know, nothing's built inside of them.
All right, thank you. I think that answers my question.
Let me follow up on that. So, in other words, if there's multiple easements that are currently on the site, the city needs to make sure that this project is not interrupting or eliminating those other easements that are private easements that are already recorded on the, on the site. Is that the case? So, what Iscon can do is provide an additional easement that provides that second access, so to speak.
That's correct.
Because this is shown on the, the, it looks like it, well, it's shown on, on this plan, that there's a paved road from the end of the cul-de-sac all the way up to the property boundary for that island parcel. And that's what's shown on this.
Correct.
Wouldn't that mean that that road has to be built? Because that's what is being shown here, the documents that are being reviewed and potentially approved? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Excuse me, Chair. For the applicant, I'm wondering if the city attorney's office can weigh in on this. I mean, we have Mr. Christman, who is a very experienced person, but he's not a lawyer, and he's giving some interpretations of things. As I've stated before, Mr. Stevenson currently has paved access to his property. During construction, he's going to have paved access to his property. And after the project is built, he's going to have paved access to his property.
Right. No, I understand that, and I think our city engineer had indicated...
But what the number of easements are, you saw up there, there was a relinquishment of an easement. There's other things. We're talking about stuff that is all part of private agreements that we are willing to, to honor. And I need to make sure the record is corrected on this tonight.
Understood. I just want to make sure that we were clear on what we're voting for, voting on, and that is that there is going to be two access points provided to that piece of property, one of which is, it appears to already be paved, but there will be a second paved road.
That is not accurate.
So, if I could clarify...
I would like...
Is that the case?
Could I clarify, Chair Wyler, because I don't think that's actually correct. If I'm, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, if the conditions are wrong, but as I understand it, there are certain recorded easements that run to the island parcel. Those recorded, there seems to be a little bit of a misunderstanding in some of the comments that are confusing easement with a built road. An easement is a legal right that you have to access a property. It's not the same thing as building a road. That's a very different thing. So, for example, a recorded easement shows a legal right to pass over a portion of a property. There are certain recorded easements that run to the island parcel. And the city's job is to ensure that the development as proposed does not impact any of those legal rights. That's what the city has done. So, any easement that is recorded and that is owned by Mr. Stevenson is not impacted by this property. As I understand, the conditions of the project do not require that that road that's shown in gray on the plans are not required, that's not required to be built. But of course, Mr. Stevenson owns whatever easements he owns, and he can, he's free to do what he likes on those easements by law.
Okay. And on that question, though, as shown on the plans, it may not be a written condition, but it's shown on the plan. So, isn't that indicating that that...
That I would prefer to...
This shaded road is going to be built. I, that's the clarification I want. I understand that there's some issues that have got to be worked out with, regarding easements. It's probably legal things that are well beyond what we can solve this evening. But if it's shown on the plan, does it get built? And that's the question I need to have answered.
I think we're, I think we're only approving entitlements at this point. I don't think we're approving a set of plans.
Oh, no, we're approving a set of plans. I believe it says all the exhibits attached here. Now, if that's not the case, I need to know that as well.
No, Commissioner Wyler, the plans right now show a paved road up to the island parcel. And so, that's what the city...
Not the existing one, the proposed one.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
The proposed road, yeah. So, they show a paved road, a proposed paved road up to the island parcel, and that would be the expectation of the development to complete that construction.
Okay. So, there seems to be, can we add a condition, since it's not a condition provided, so that there is no confusion, two years from now, 10 years from now, whenever this actually starts getting built, that that other road's going to be built?
I'm a little confused, because I thought that the agreement was between the parcel and the Harkrishna.
We're approving this.
And it was the, and it was between tho, it was, the onus was on them to pave the road for the property owner. I didn't know we were approving a set of plans.
Here's the thing. If I see that a road is supposed to be paved on these plans, then it's got to be paved. Otherwise, it'd be just an easement. It's just an easement.
It's being shown as an easement.
An easement that's got a paved road.
If you guys want to, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
How can, how can, how can Escondido pave somebody else's easement?
No, Escondido's not paying for it. It's the developer. The developer, here's the thing, is if they worked out whatever agreement as a part of being a good neighbor, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I get it.
And they're going to say, "You know what, Mr. Property Owner up here, we're going to do you one better than just allowing you the easement that's fully accessible. We're going to build you another road."
Yeah, then we're incorporating a private agreement between the parties into something we're, we are approving, and I don't think we can do that.
And it should have never been on these plans.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Can I just say something?
No, I'm sorry. We will ask questions when we need clarification.
I'm just trying to clarify. Okay.
So, right, right now, we're getting our own clarification on this side. Okay, but I appreciate it.
I understood. I just, I'm more than willing to help you out.
We may or may not solve this issue tonight. I'm sure we're not going to solve all the easement issues. The only thing I'm concerned right now is agreement on what these plans say and what the intent of the developer is at the end of the day, because this is what we're showing on the plans. That's really what I'm after. It's really no different than, you know what, we show 55 trees being planted here. There better well darn be 55 trees planted.
I would totally agree with that. And it should not be shaded as paved on the, on the plan if it's a private agreement to pave it between the two parties.
And then that takes it right out of our approval arena.
That takes it right out of...
But it is shown. So, that, that's why, see, because right now, we've already got confusion already, because, but if we approve this, showing that on there, that's really the, at the end of the day, that's what has to be built.
Whether or not, well, whether or not that's shaded or not on the plans, we can approve it in either direction tonight, correct? As long as there's an understanding of what the intent is. Can we clarify what that intent is, and whether or not it's shaded or not, whether or not it's called, we can make that a condition either way.
Yeah, but I think that goes back to us, us playing the role of staff, making a call on that.
Well, either, either the developer or staff might have had an intent here. Maybe we can ask what the intent was.
Okay.
Can I give you the standard for the conditions that you should be considering?
Yes.
So, so a condition should be reasonably related to the use of the property for which the CUP is requested. So, you should be thinking about the use of the property, the development of the property, in determining whether you think that road would be an appropriate condition.
That's good. I'm glad that brings some clarification.
I guess my problem is, I see, it says here, it, there's a sidewalk, curb, and gutter, what is it saying? There's a, a curb and a sidewalk. And, and then on the other side, six-inch AC berm. The print's so small. I mean... City planner, if I could get your opinion, thank you.
If I may weigh in, thank you, Chair Wyler. So, to clarify the entitlement process as it pertains to our development review and the California Environmental Quality Act, the applicant puts forward a project description to the city. This is their scope of work. It's shown on the conceptual plans as provided in your packet. They are proposing their totality of physical improvements. As Chair Wyler has noted, the plans in the packet do show improvement on the easement for the purposes of a road. We need, that information is pertinent to the California Environmental Quality Act. It impacts their stormwater, because it's pervious surface, impervious surface, excuse me. So, there is an analysis that is based on that scope of work that they have proposed. There is no condition on the project tied to them mandating that they pave that road, but it is shown as part of their entitlement as the most intensification of the proposed project in totality. So, I think to the point of what would have to happen, is the applicant, if the project were approved, would have to record the easement, the new easement that would provide access. How the road ends up getting paved is to be determined based on financing, phasing of the project, et cetera. And that is not conditioned in the project. So, hopefully, that provides some clarification.
Maybe we ought to find out what the applicant's intention was.
If that's not conditioned, who is paving it, I guess, is my question.
Right, right now, it's, maybe it gets paved, maybe it doesn't. Hold on.
So, there is no condition identifying who would pave it. Logic would dictate the applicant is showing that it's paved. However, an easement agreement would be drafted through the post-entitlement process. And I do not know the full extent of what goes into an easement agreement, so I would defer to Jason and Dare as to whether or not that would identify who the responsible party is for paving or not.
Okay.
So, traditionally, though, as a follow-up to what you said, traditionally, that information is typically shown on the, on that schematic at this point for purposes of evaluating other, other entities making their evaluations. It doesn't specifically, because it's put on there, doesn't mean that that has to be built as a, I guess that's what you're saying, right?
There's no identified sequence of when that paving would have to occur, based on how the project is proposed and conditioned. It could occur at any point.
If you think of it this way, it's entitled. If you all approve the plans as they are, then it's an entitlement. The developer has that entitlement and can go build those plans as they appear. They're not required to build that road, as the city has conditioned the project.
Right.
But they can, because of... But they can because it's entitled.
But a lot of the information and SEQA relies on it being paved, correct?
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it.
Oh, I was just saying, but it doesn't affect, whether or not they build that road doesn't affect the easement, the legal easement rights of the property owner of that island parcel.
So the easement has to be recorded?
His easements already exist. They're legally, he has legal easements. If they, two, the two parties work out an agreement to change the location of his easements, they can work that out as a private matter between them. But the, his legal easement rights are not being affected by this project.
Stan, I think we really need to hear from the applicant, what their intention was.
Okay, yeah.
As I stated before, ISCON will go forward with easements to Mr. Stevenson's property consistent with the written agreements that have governed those easements going back to Mr. Reardon in, you know, 2000-ish or something. And you saw one of the exhibits that was put up by the HOA property. You're gonna relinquish the existing easement, you're gonna get the other one. If that's what he's willing to do, and he's willing to live with the terms of the recorded easement that talks about one sidewalk, not two, and he wants this and that, like, he, he's trying to pack things into an existing easement agreement that aren't there. But if he's willing to, as he's repeatedly said in writing, you know, acknowledge that the existing easement, his existing paved easement to his property-
Hold on, and, and I, this is way bigger of a story than what I, I asked. What, what I want to know is, is that your intent or ISCON's intent to provide an easement and a paved road in close proximity to what's being shown here? Understanding that we still gotta go through a final map stage-
Right.
For at least this portion of the development. I, we're asking, what's the intent? Because we're here at a public hearing, and you know what? Somebody's gonna go back and go, "Yeah, they said they're gonna pave this."
The, the answer is, we intend to pave that easement that you just showed, you know, consistent with Mr. Stevenson acknowledging that his existing paved easement is gonna be relinquished in return. He's, he calls the new easement, the transition easement. He's shown that the other one is being relinquished. And if those are the terms-
Then that's the trade-off, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, now, now I've got a better understanding because it seemed to me, what I was hearing, is you're gonna have two access points. That was what I was hearing.
But regardless of what happens, he's going to have paved access to his property. He's, he's always going to have paved access to his property.
Okay, now let me clarify. What, what are, what are we voting on then? Because now it seems clear that this is a give-and-take sort of thing that's gotta be worked out some other time, but there is gonna be paved access at some point from somewhere up to that house. It seems like that's what we're actually, a part of this vote.
I have a question of the applicant. Did the private, private agreement on the easement rights include paving?
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did. And there was also an agreement with Mr. Reardon that his, the existing paved access to his property was gonna be relinquished. We're happy to live with that agreement, and he'll get a brand-new easement road.
Has he changed his mind?
But it's also, it's also gonna have to be realigned because the easement that was agreed to before, you know, had some issues. So we're, we're absolutely willing to work through all of those things expeditiously and in good faith if we've got a, a, a reasonable meeting of the, meeting of the minds.
This is just a question because I don't, I don't think we have jurisdiction over that, any of that.
That's, so we were, we were planning, yes, we were going to pave it at our expense. That was our agreement. But again, there, there are other moving parts. He's gotta relinquish the one, as, you know, agreed to in writing, so.
Okay, it, it sounds like this is not in our purview then because of what's been explained, which is, these are private agreements. And that's not what we're here to do. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, I just wanna make sure that's clear, um, you know, for the purposes of what we're here for. So it sounds like that stuff's gotta be worked out at some point in the future. Okay. Questions? Commissioner McCarroll?
I just have one regarding the gentleman's comment that spoke about the traffic report. And I just want clarification that that was done recently and not back in 2003 as he was under the-
It was a table.
-belief of, yes. Are we, can you just confirm that we, we did do a traffic report that's recent?
The traffic study that was done, was done very recently. There are tables that you need to use to calculate the average daily traffic based on the use. Those are tables from 2002 that are still valid today. They're sanddag tables that haven't been changed since 2002, but we use those on all current projects.
As, as a follow-up, um, I thought there were update, updated, um, models that were, that are supposed to be used when they're doing traffic analysis, and they're updated, I don't know, every couple of three, four years, however that works. And it, and it's like, it's series 10, series 12. I don't know what series we're up to now.
I think the table is, is the basis, and then there is the ongoing traffic study that they have.
So, in, in other words, the table that was valid back in-
It's a criteria.
The early 2000s, it's the same methodology and table that everybody uses today?
Yes, that's correct. It's still valid.
All right, I just, I, I wanted that clarification.
It doesn't mean that the, you know, it's not a, you know, the traffic in 2002 is less than it is now. It's just a set of criteria by which they evaluate traffic. Are you done? Ivan, I've got a question. As far as the, um, refresh my memory, I, I thought there was some meetings with the HOA. How many meetings were there with the HOA that included the applicant?
One, and that was onsite with the applicant and the HOA and Mr. Stevenson.
And that was in June or May or something?
That was in June, yes, around June 25th, I believe.
Okay, and was there a, uh, initial, was there another meeting with the, just the HOA?
So we met with the HOA maybe mid or early May. Then there was a request for an additional meeting, which was extended to the applicant. The applicant was also there, and we met with, on Mr. Stevens' property with the fire department. And that was the totality of the meetings.
And I'm assuming that the proper protocols for public, uh, notice were given for the surrounding community?
As it relates to the public hearing tonight?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Stevie?
Mr. Stevenson? Sorry, did I get your last name correct? Quick question for you. What do you feel like this commission needs to know with respect to this easement matter, which has not yet been addressed?
Thank you for the question. Um, when I handed out that, um, reference guide for the California Law and Development, I wanted you guys to really look at 66474G because it does have something to do with easements. And the applicant has basically stated, "Yeah, we're willing to build the road." Well, that's already been recorded. And it's, um, that's something that's a private agreement. It's recorded. It came with our, um, our house when we opened up title with the house. It gave, they gave us the easement and all the agreements that came with it. But, um, in that code, 66474, it says, and I'll read it to you, "Any alternate easement will be substantially equival- equivalent to the one previously acquired." So yes, we have, we had an easement that we're still driving up on this road, but that was relinquished. And we have Mr. Morell's signature on it. This easement is relinquished, and his signature is on it, and Mr. Morell's signature is on it. So they know that easement was relinquished, but we're still driving up a road. The new easement agreement comes with recitals. It comes with an agreement to build a road and the sidewalk and everything else that goes with it, and that's also recorded. It's not a private agreement. I don't know why I keep hearing this private agreement stuff. It's, it's a recorded easement. It'd be like SD, telling SDGNE, "Go pound sand. You don't, you have a private agreement with us." No, it's a recorded easement. But it does say, you know, if, if the alternate easement, which is that road you see on that, on that plot map there, if it's going to be alternated, then the new road we drive up needs to be a new easement. And they have to, they have to give us a new easement because that was relinquished 20 years ago. Other than that, um, they have to build a new road before the temple's built. That was the agreement.
That's very helpful. May I ask a question of the city attorney? You made the clarification between an easement and a road. My understanding of the kind of legal framework, as a layman and a sometimes idiot, is that you have this easement, which is recorded, and we have that. And then you have on top of that an agreement between the parties, which has to do with the road.
So, um, in this case, there, as I, as I understand the documents, there is a recorded, um, easement and maintenance agreement. Part of that is the actual easement that is plotted. And we do have a slide somewhere, do we have a slide somewhere, Ivan, that shows that, that?
We, we do. I would have to, uh-
I don't know, but I, I think it might be helpful for everybody to, to actually just look and see. So, the, what the city did is, the engineers worked very closely with my office. We made sure that all of the recorded easements are actually plotted here. You can see them. And so, we worked with the developer to make sure that the development as proposed does not impact any of the recorded easements at all. So they will all remain, just, the development isn't impacting any of Mr. Stevenson's easement rights. Whether or not they are able to work out the easement issues amongst the two parties is, is up to the two parties themselves. But it's the city's job to make sure that his easement rights are not impacted.
What specifically does the city and this, first, the city have line of sight on? And second, this commission have the ability to opine on or require?
So, we're not able to adjudicate rights to, uh, that are in a private agreement. We just don't have the authority to do that.
And the rights are the paved road and the sidewalk?
Any of the rights that are included in that, in that agreement. I don't know exactly what they are. I don't, you know, I, they have to do with maintenance and building and those sorts of things. We don't have any of those. What, what we can do is, we can look at, we had the engineer plot the actual legal description for the easement, the legal right as it exists on the property. And that's what's plotted, and that's what we have the ability to make sure that the development doesn't impact those rights. But we don't have any authority to adjudicate who has to maintain, who has to build. That's really outside of this commission's purview.
So if we approve the project this evening, what we are approving is the legal right of way? And we are just having to rely upon the ability of the parties to, in good faith, put in a paved road to which the Stevenson family ha- can use to have access to their property?
So, no, I would put it a different way because what, so right now, Mr. Stevenson has certain easement rights. He has certain access rights. What the city needs to do is look at the proposed development and make sure it doesn't impact any of those existing rights. Legal rights, his access, and that's what the city has done. So the project as proposed doesn't impact his rights at all.
The, the, the problem I'm having, again, because I'm a simple man who is in great need of taquitos at this point in his life, is the leap from the word "rights" to a paved road. Can you help me make that connection?
So, um, right now, there, as, as, as I believe the engineer has said, the city engineer has said, there is a paved road that Mr. Stevenson uses to access his property. That, the proposed development does not impact that road at all. That easement, both the paved road and the easement exist. It's not, um, going to be impacted by the development as it's being proposed. The other 2003 easement that you see, um, on the plan is also not impacted by the project. So, Mr. Stevenson can go pave the easement that he wants, if he wanted to. I'm, I'm saying that's something that they need to work out by themselves, but if he owns the easement rights, he owns the right to pave that easement unless something else prevents that.
Looking at it, it looks like the easements are not even part of the project at all.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They've, they pulled the project back-
Yeah.
So that it does not impact those easements at all. That's what I'm saying, yes.
They are completely outside of what we are approving.
Right, if I can add to that, the footprint of the project is, uh, none of the footprint of the project is impacting or going to be built on e- any of the easements that exist there.
Well, uh, so Hari Krishna Glen, is that part of the easement? Or does the easement start, uh, start where the gray starts? And here's why I'm asking. If Mr. Stevenson is, he's saying that he has relinquished the current easement that he drives on. And if we approve this project, even if it doesn't touch that easement, if he is given this other easement, but it goes to a street, which may or may not be built anytime soon, then he's got one easement to access his property, to which he has theoretically relinquished, and then a second easement to nowhere. Am I understanding that correctly?
So, Commissioner Stevie, the-
If the Hari Krishna Glen is a private road and he is not granted access, that would be correct.
Well, if it's not built. I mean, I don't know, maybe he has a Jeep and this isn't a problem. But, um, you know, if it's not built, it seems problematic.
So he had, right now, the island parcel owner, Mr. Stevenson, has a easement already through where the, uh, private road is gonna be built.
Correct.
So, right now, that easement exists today. It goes, if you can look at the, the dashed lines and follow them through the project, they go through the cul-de-sac. They keep going straight, and then they start to curve up towards his property. And do you see that existing 35-foot access easement per this?
Right, the 2003?
2003?
Yeah.
So that easement exists today?
Yeah.
And so, the, uh-
So that 2003 easement runs from where it currently is adjacent to his property all the way to Rincon? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. But, but, but he can't drive on it because it's just an easement? I mean, he can drive on it if he has the right kind of vehicle and he can navigate the terrain, but, okay.
And, and the development is not going to change any of those rights?
Right, right, okay. I, I know, I know, I understand, okay. It is, it does, it does strike me as a predicament. Um, I would like to hear, if that's okay, the answer to, yes, to my question.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Um, so that road we're current, currently driving up, just to confirm, is no longer an easement. That was relinquished. And we have Robert Morell's signature on that agreement, along with all the recitals that went along with it. And then we have a road maintenance agreement that included to build a new road with the sidewalks and the asphalt and the storm drains and everything else that goes with it. And all this was supposed to be done back 20-plus years ago. And we all know they lost funding on it, but that doesn't remove them the fiduciary responsibility to build a new road on our new easement because that's in the road maintenance agreement. It comes with all the recitals. It's not just a plot map where the easement goes. There's also recitals and agreements that include building that new road. That's in the easement. That's in the recorded easement. It's not a private contract.
It's not a public road.
It's not a public road.
Yeah, it's a private, private road.
But, but just like SDG, SDG, Vista Irrigation District, they both have- But just like SDG, Vista Irrigation District, they both have easements on our property and their property. But for us to say, "Hey, we're not going to honor that easement because we decided to do something else. We were going to put an ADU there," that's just crazy.
Well, but they're not doing that, right? Like, SDG&E has an easement right through my property. It just means that they can drive their big, heavy trucks over it.
And it has, an easement has to be recorded for it to be legal.
Yes, exactly. And this new easement with the gray road is recorded, along with the recitals and the road maintenance agreement. It's the legal terms of that new easement that goes along with that plot map.
But that's a private agreement.
It's a recorded easement.
Doesn't matter. Still a private road.
So, I think, at this point, Chair Wyler, I have one other question, but not regarding this. My question about the easement has now been satisfied. So, thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
You're welcome.
My last question. Do you, you're giving me a look?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. My last question has to do with more of a hypothetical. There has been a lot said about fire concerns and traffic. This commission has approved, in various forms, projects in that specific neighborhood, done by Beazer. You're all familiar with them, Conway, and off of north, right? My familiarity, I drive your guys' street. I drive my kids to Calvin, same as you. Those projects, right now, the density on those projects is such that one could reasonably contemplate that in 24 acres, you're looking at something like, let's just say conservatively, 40 to 50 homes that would go into that area, once you factor in all the density bonuses and whatever. And so, my question is for the city engineer. If we did not have a temple and the 10 homes going in as contemplated, what would the fire and traffic impact? And let's just say traffic because you don't do fire. What would the traffic impact be on Rincon? Would you guys be expecting like a widening of the road that isn't contemplated right now or something else? And I know this is a hypothetical, but I'm just curious.
So, the project before us today is going to widen the portion of Rincon in front of their property? And then, the traffic study that was done notes that the intersection of Rincon and Conway currently runs at a level of service of A, which means that there's very little delay when you approach that intersection at what time, whatever time of the day. It, that intersection currently functions at a level of A. There goes A, B, C, D, E, F. And so, a hypothetical project, a subdivision, not this project, I think is what you're asking, of 50 homes coming into the area, they would have to, you know, generate their own traffic study, figure out how many vehicle daily trips that would, you know, impact that intersection in those roads. And then, you know, depending on what those numbers are, they could be required to do additional studies. Or, you know, with the level of service of that intersection where it is, it would take a much larger project to require, or to... Yeah, for the city to require improvements or, you know, like a signal at that intersection.
Okay. So, if a 50, 40 to 50-home development went into that area instead of the temple, it would likely not require much more in the way of improvements for traffic reasons than what we're seeing now. And it wouldn't solve any, like, we wouldn't be connecting another road or something. So, it wouldn't solve the box canyon problem, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, the staff or the applicant? None? All right, we're going to close the public testimony and we can start deliberations here. If you want to try and wrap this up, or we can have a vote to continue this, depending on how you guys feel. So, if there's no motion to continue this, then we'll, I mean, continue the meeting, then we'll move into deliberations.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, then we'll continue. Comments? Anyone want to start?
I do. I've been listening to this for a while, learning a lot. But there's something fundamental that I think is missing. And it really brings into my mind question about the whole project. But clarification can help. And I think that's the number one thing that I think we've all learned here tonight. I think that everybody in here is working, wants to work in good faith. There's a lot of passion amongst everybody. And I think as good citizens of Escondido, as neighbors currently, we have to work together through this. And it goes to the heart of my question earlier when we talked about whether or not the, for lack of a, the animal sanctuary near the top of the property there, that's not included in what we're talking about tonight. I've visited this property. And the idea that this parcel that we're talking about, which is on the north side of the property, is the extent of what's going to be happening in regards to this temple's functions, it's just demonstrably false. When we talk about the easement to Mr. Stevenson, there is parking that goes on when they're having the animal sanctuary. I have seen pictures, I've seen videos of massive amounts of parking going on very near the gate to Mr. Stevenson's house, when they're having activities near the cows and the different animals that are there. So, to me, how in the world are we going to say that you're going to have a full house? You have the 70 parking lots, parking spots that are going to be created. But there's also going to be parking above near all of the cows. When there's a big event, that's where the overflow parking is going to go. And then, there's only going to be one way out. That's what we've just had an hour-long discussion on, that there's basically one way out of this property. And that's not just for the folks who live in the house. It has to do with the people who are parking up above by the farm. So, to me, from what I've heard about how the planning, the staff went about this, that it was narrowly focused, and when the fire department went out, it was narrowly focused on the north side of the property, this specific parcel. But the problem is, is that the entire 22 acres are owned by an entity and they're going to be using more than just this parcel. Now, maybe I'm misunderstanding the situation. But there's going to be activities that go along with this temple that's drawing in more people that are going to have activities amongst more of the property. And I don't think that these plans have accounted for that. Am I wrong?
Thank you for that question. So, the scope of what is before the commission is, as the project is conditioned, for all the activities to occur inside. There is no component of the CUP that allows for parking to occur outside of the designated parking areas identified on the site plan as proposed. In the event of large festivals, that is conditioned to undergo a separate deferred submittal process where that will be analyzed by staff through this process. But instead of returning to the Planning Commission for ultimate decision pursuant to our municipal code, it will go to the Director of Development Services for decision-making. If they cannot accommodate their festival parking in a manner that complies with the municipal code, the director has the discretion to deny the temporary use permit. So, that is something we would analyze at a future point. The CUP covers the entire project site in terms of entitlement. The environmental document looks at the entire component of the project site. But their proposed project description and the scope of work, the disturbed area, is highly focused in that northwest corner.
Next, so therefore, parking is not allowed up by where the cows are at?
Unless there is existing parking associated with the caretaker unit for the purposes of the caretaker, there, I will defer to Ivan to clarify this, there does not appear to be proposed parking over there for purposes of that, correct?
That is correct.
All right, because that's a huge thing. Because if there's, I'm very glad that we clarified this. Because if there is parking up there, it's a very dangerous situation. Because you can fit 20, 30 cars up there and there's not a lot of, the road is not going, as we've just been discussing, it's not going to be completed all the way up. And so, it's not two lanes. It's, you know, you barely get one car out there right now. So, as long as it's very clear to everybody in this situation that there cannot be any parking going on up there, that this animal sanctuary that is currently being used by your group as an animal sanctuary where you're bringing people in to see these animals, they're beautiful. I've seen them, by the way. The horse, the cattle, fantastic, beautiful. But there's activities going on there and we're not accounting for that because we have narrowed it down to just the single parcel. And I don't know if that's a good idea.
Comment? Commissioner Spear?
I guess I would just say, there's been a lot of discussion. I do appreciate Chair Wyler's comments in really just thanking people for participating in this process and for all the time that everyone has spent to be here and share that, to share your comments with us. I see my role and our role as really taking to heart all of those comments and acting in the best interests of everyone in this city. And the way I've approached this is to say, you know, there, we could second-guess a lot of things. So, we have a process for managing all of these concerns. And how do we best address all of those people that have concerns about this project? I take those seriously and I look at those as if they were my own concerns. And in my mind, I have to say, here's a concern, here's a question. I have to feel very comfortable that those concerns are addressed properly. And in that process, for me at least, I have taken every one of these concerns. I've written them down and I've asked those questions in my mind. In what's been presented, if there are any questions or dubious portions of that, I ask those questions. I don't know that I care to go through each of those and explain the rationale because we've done that at length tonight. But I will say this, a comment was made earlier that I agree with. And that is, every one of us, we have concerns and we second-guess. We second-guess fire issues. We second-guess traffic issues and noise issues and all of these things. We second-guess what we think somebody's going to use this property for. But we have to rely on laws. We have to rely on experts. And we have to rely on our best judgment to address those and act in a manner that's fair to everybody. As I've gone through and listened to, you know, the applicant here has not gone through an easy process. They've gone through a process that's been very meticulous, very scrutinizing. I don't know how many departments and concerns they've had to address. To my, what I've heard here tonight is that those concerns have been addressed. Every one of these concerns. And when I think about the tenor of, you know, there's a lot of ways you can address concerns. You can address them in a way where you do the minimum possible and you go kicking and screaming. Or you can address them in a way where you really approach something to say, "I really want to do the right thing." And in some cases, go above and beyond. My perception is, as I look at the experts in traffic, in fire, look at the work, frankly, good work, this is, I believe, the city staff has done in approaching this project. And I feel very satisfied that these items have been addressed. I also feel very comfortable with, I mean, I think of the process of going through all of these things. And I, you know, I hope we live in a city, I like to think we live in a city, that takes into account everybody's concerns, but also welcomes people and tries to help them make their dreams come true and live in a good place. So, from my point of view, I am, I'm satisfied that these concerns have been addressed. And I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Jester?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Spear. I agree. Certainly, there has been a lot of public comment. There has been a lot of concern that has addressed this commission. We've listened to those concerns. I too am satisfied with the work that staff has done. But I think we do ourselves a disservice when we want to enjoy our property to the exclusion of our neighbor. These people should be able to do and enjoy their property the same way that you enjoy yours. I, I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Thank you, Barry, for your eloquent statement. And same to you. I'm also in agreement with everything that you said as well. I do feel that every concern has been addressed. I think there's going to be goodwill from the applicant to make sure that their neighbors are taken care of and not, you know, harassed with noise output. So, I'm in favor of the project as well.
We have systems in place in the conditional use permit to account for violations like feeding the public and a non-public kitchen and stuff like that. So, I mean, there are conditions within the conditional use permit that they would have to abide by if it's granted. And if they don't live up to those conditions, then it's going to be reevaluated. There's a lot of, you know, problems we're going to find out about. It's going to come right back to us.
Commissioner Stevie?
So, I want to take a moment to explain something. I've only been on this commission for about a year and a half. And in that short amount of time, there have been a number of projects that have come before us that I absolutely hate. And I come at those projects from the perspective of trying to figure out how to get to a no. The fact of the matter is, this commission has to operate under some very strict confines. If we were to reject this project, we can't simply say, "No." We have to give an instruction to the city staff. This part of the project needs to be reconsidered. We disagree with your findings. You need to go do more work. It has to be like that. And, you know, my fellow commissioners have been here when I have made a valiant effort to try and make that happen. I've taken some pretty big swings. And, you know, we do our best. Part of the reason I was going down the line of questioning tonight with respect to the development, you know, that are going on around you guys is because, like you, I'm, my little street, and I live on a very narrow street, right up the road from you guys, right adjacent to it is a 10-acre property. And adjacent to that, another 10, 15-acre property. I don't know how big it all is. I count it in homes. I'm guessing 70. And that's going to land right next to us. It's just a matter of time. All the signals are there, okay? So, I'm going to be in your shoes soon. But when that day comes, I'm going to be constrained. Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to be kicked out because it's adjacent to my property. But everyone else is going to be constrained.
but everyone else is going to be constrained. This evening, my line of questioning, I could not find any way to anchor a finding that stood in contrast to the findings of the city staff. And, you know, I appreciate all of the comments around fire, I appreciate all the comments around traffic. I drive past the three memorials every single day. Actually, I drive past four, because I drive past the one right by Reedy Creek School. And I see the picture of Michael, and I see the picture of the little boy, I remember the night it happened, I drove by the scene. Right? The little boy that was most recently that crossed, and that whole situation was erected. I see his mom and dad periodically, there with candles. I sympathize, I do. But when city engineers tell us that in, as subject matter experts in their legal opinion and based on the same framework that everyone else has to operate in accordance to, that this does not impact the traffic flows in the way that we're concerned it might, that's the opinion that I have to listen to. I am constrained to listen to. Well, it's a set of criteria, it's the one that everyone uses, and this is, this is how it works. This is how it works. And so, because I cannot find, in a fair way, absent my own personal judgment, a legal finding to go back to city staff with and say this needs to be reconsidered, I too feel compelled to support this project.
So normally, I take a lot of time at the very end to summarize what has occurred this But I'm, I'm surrounded by, by great planning commissioners who take every project to heart, because that's our job. We have to look at things and make a determination that we have to live with, maybe not next door to a certain project, but we all live next door to something. So, I, you know what? I have nothing more to add. I think my fellow planning commissioners did an excellent job with their questions, with their comments, with the deliberation. I really don't have anything more to add, other than I appreciate everybody that did come out. It's very important as a part of this process, have your voices be heard. I think we gave everybody ample opportunity to speak this in, this evening with the con, within the confines of what we need to work with. I mean, we're here, it's, you know, after 11 o'clock at night. Most of that time was listening to the public. So, I, I just want to say I really appreciate that. With that, I would like to entertain a, a motion.
One final thing, as it looks like I'm going to be in the minority on this one, which is okay, I just wanted to put on the record that I think everybody made excellent points there, the vote's in favor. I think Commissioner Stevie's point about the fact that when we deny an application has to be done with reason, within the law, we have to find problems with the findings of staff. And that was my point. For the record, I do disagree with some of the findings, not because the staff did a bad job. I think that there is an element here of not looking at the total picture, where we have just one piece of the parcel being looked at, when it is a known fact that there is activities for this great congregation. Look, I'm not necessarily opposed to the project. I think that your community who showed up tonight was fantastic, and I think that you would be, should be a welcome part of, of the, of this neighborhood. Having said that, there are activities going on throughout the property that are not being considered because we are just confining this discussion to one part of the parcel. And that is why I will vote no tonight. Not because it's a bad project, not against the great people who showed up tonight, but I don't think that we are looking at this in its totality. So, thank you. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jester to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Spear. If we can, oh, before we do the vote, wanted to clarify that the condition that was requested by the applicant, that was withdrawn.
That is correct. And just to clarify for the record, the motion would be to recommend approval to the city council.
Yeah, it'd be, yes. And that would be, what is that, approval of the resolution 2025?
Dash zero eight.
Thank you. I think we've got a motion and a second, if we can have the vote.
So, motion to approve resolution number 2025 dash zero eight. Chair Wyler?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jester?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevie?
Yes.
Commissioner Augustin?
No.
The vote is five to zero, five to one to zero to approve resolution number 2025 dash zero eight.
That ends this portion of the meeting. You're free to stay or you're free to go. We're moving on to other business, and good luck to you all. Well, I guess we move on to current business. Doesn't look like there's anything on that. Future agenda items? Anybody want to put anything on the agenda?
We, so just an update, we had tentatively planned to discuss the Grand Avenue project, and so I'm excited to bring a two-and-a-half-hour presentation to you this evening. I spoke with Ms. Morones ahead of time, and we have decided to table that to the next meeting, so that will be a future agenda item.
So we'll just put that on the agenda at some point in the future? Not necessarily the next meeting, or just to be determined? Commissioner Stevie?
10:14.
Okay. Oral communications? Any other oral communications that came in?
None.
Thank you. Selection of chair and vice chair, we're going to postpone that until we have a, yeah, until next year. No, just kidding. We'll just postpone that. Planning commissioners report? Anybody have anything to report on? Saying none? City planners report?
Yes, thank you. So we will be holding a 10:14 meeting. There will be the presentation from the subcommittee reporting out, as well as an informational presentation from your long-range planning division on the new state bills, AB 130, Assembly Bill 130, and Senate Bill 131. So it will be a current business item anticipated meeting. We will also be holding a meeting on 10:28, and you should have received an email from me requesting confirmation on whether you could attend a special meeting on November 18th, Tuesday, November 18th. This is the third Tuesday of November. The second Tuesday in November is Veterans Day, so that will result in no planning commission. And the fourth Tuesday of November is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So if you could please respond to my email asking on whether you can make the 11:18 meeting, we do have a, quite a few private development applications that are getting primed and ready to go for decision, and so the, it would be beneficial for us to hold a meeting if we anticipate the other two meetings in November being canceled due to quorum issues around the holidays. So that is the update from me on future meetings.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that's it, unless anybody else has got something to say? Saying none? All right. This meeting is adjourned.